Good evening. The Richmond Board of Education will come to order. I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the five states of America, to the republic. To our nation. Because of all liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Shuboy, our mission statement, please.
At Richmond Community Schools, we provide equality education that empowers students to be successful in a global community.
Roll call, please.
Deb Michonne?
Here. Do we need to say virtual? I am attending virtually in the city of Richmond.
We're here in person.
We're supposed to say that.
We're so. We're in person. Okay, so I. In the city of Richmond, Michigan.
Thank you. Angela Posito?
Hello, I hear participating virtually in Richmond City, Macomb County, Michigan.
I am in person, Richmond, Macomb Township, Michigan. Kyle Simmons will be joining us later with notice. Daniel Sutton?
You're muted.
I'm here in person.
Margaret Teltow?
In person, city of Richmond, county of Macomb, Michigan.
Sheri Zubey? In person, Richmond.
It's not working. Can't hear you when you're speaking.
So Danielle or myself?
Danielle.
Okay, I'm in person, Richmond, Macomb County, Michigan. Thank you, Sheri. We have a quorum.
Before we approve the agenda, we are going to make one change. We are going to add an item seventeen. We're going to have a discussion on virtual attendance or in person. Then the action items will become eighteen and the adjournments will become nineteen. At this time, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
I motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Do I have support?
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
I motion to accept the agenda. Is that the wrong one?
That is.
Turn it out.
No.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the consent agenda as presented in the attached documentation.
Support.
Thank you. Mr. Wamsley, if we have any discussion or any comments here?
We had no questions on the claims and accounts for the personnel report. We have a. Sorry, trying to get my papers here. She's often works at our bus driver, so during when she's not a bus driver, she'll be working in the food service. So her effective date would actually be today officially for that angle. And there was no questions or comments regarding the minutes.
Any comments from the board?
Yes, Brian, just looking at the open positions down at Schedule B athletics, I don't see the varsity girls basketball position. That's an opening, correct?
Yep.
Okay, and then the varsity football head coach, are we working towards? Where's that at?
That will be posted with the fall sports within the next week or two. We do typically a season posting because everyone's posted annually. So that will be part of it.
So it gets, so that gets done in May, you said, or in some a date in April? When did we?
It'll be out before April. I will get with Kim to get the fall sports posting out. The annual posting that we do every year.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the board? Okay, I need a all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, at this time, we have a bond update. Mr. Wamsley?
Hey, the first bond refunding bid results back in December, the Board of Education. Tried to do some refinancing of bids or bonds, excuse me. The bids came in today, so here from looking, trying to find her on the list, so give me a second. Sarah Moore from PFM is here to talk about the results of those bids, so give me a second here. Tammy, do you see Sarah on here?
Are you looking for Carrie Blanchett from PFM?
I apologize.
Third page.
That's the wrong name. There it is. Carrie. So in front, you should have two sets of documents. One is a set. It is paper clipped. It says PFM on the top. That's the analysis that they did today. And then the second. And then the second set is for the action item to approve the sale of the bonds or the refinancing. So I am going to ask Carrie to unmute, so they give me a second to find her on here. Carrie Blanchett. Carrie, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Yep, we can hear you.
Me, right? Okay. I apologize, I had to dial in with my phone too because my speaker is not working, my sound is not working on my computer. Well, again, my name is Carrie Blanchett. I'm with PFM and RJ could not be here tonight. But you had a very successful sale today for those refunding bonds.
Carrie, can I interrupt you a minute?
Sure. Sure.
Do you have your mute on your laptop? If you're using your phone, if you can mute it because you're getting an echo.
Okay. There, sorry.
That's better.
Oh, there we go. There we go.
Yep.
Thought I had.
And I have the documents, if you want any of those documents up on the screen.
Well, what I was going to go over first was just the summary of the bids received. And the school receives five bids. And. That ranged from a low interest rate of 1.21% to a high of 1.46%. So that was a great number of bids and it was phenomenal interest rate. Very interesting that the second low bid was just a fraction of difference from the low bid. We don't see that close of bids that that often. The next low bid was 1.2122. So you had 1.2121 and 1.2122. So, you know, that was an excellent outcome. And what does that mean for the district? There's RJ had sent a, or Sarah sent in a summary of the 2021 refunding result. And I'm just going to briefly go over that. He took out bonds, the 2013 bonds with interest rate of 4.02% and then replaced it with these new refunding bonds, which carry an interest rate of 1.21%. And that produces a savings of $385,883 to the district for a net present value of $368,703 or 5.215% of the bonds to be refunded. So, you know, very favorable outcome and it achieved, you know, all the objectives of the school district. With that, I didn't plan on going through all the schedules, all the detailed schedules, but wondered if anyone had any questions on the outcome or the results or the sale.
So just as a board, the packet that she's referencing gives you the the schedule of repayments and so forth, and the ultimate savings to your taxpayers with paying less interest on money that we owe.
Is that money saved all at one time or is it over time?
It's over time. It's over the, so it's between now and 2028. And there should be in that package of numbers, schedules, a couple of schedules that will actually show the savings per year. And it actually is a little bit different per year because we were looking, working on a target with your overall millage. So it ranges from $21,000 in one of the years to as high as $99,000 in one of the years.
Thank you.
And then I'm looking at RJ's notes and that the structure actually was set up to take the savings to allow for a drop in the millage rate. And the 2024 and 25 lobbies to accommodate the next series of the 2019 voted authorization.
Other questions for Carrie? So in a nutshell, what the board's action was in December. We went out to bid. We have an opportunity to lower interest rates. And so tonight, there's an action item to approve the resolution to refinance the bids or bonds, excuse me.
Very exciting. Yeah, that's a huge change.
Especially as you look at the one chart to structure it, that the millage rate that we have to levy will actually be dropping in that 2425 timeframe that Carrie referenced. Okay, that's, that's it. We, based of the, the board update on, it went well for us. So I was, I'm looking for later on an approval of the resolution.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Carrie.
Okay, congratulations on the excellent outcome.
Okay, we now have the construction project update.
Yep, I asked Jerry McCollin, who's the, from Ock Construction, to be here tonight to give you an update on the construction project. And I will put up on the screen his presentation, but you also have in front of you a paper copy. I'm just looking for Jerry as he, there he is. Jerry, give me a minute just to put the file up on the screen, so I will ask you to unmute.
Thanks, Brian. I will say that's a tough act to follow with the. Okay, so we've, we've been busy, as you can see on the campus, actually while spring break was underway. We had many of the contractors on site working on quite a few things. So here to update you on Willie Elementary additions renovations, the middle school and the high school. At Lee Elementary, as you can see, the additions, as we talked last year, we really needed to get those going. And you can see why the amount of work that's required to get that rolling to get ready for the, for the fall here. But we do have paint on the interior walls, the ceiling grid at 95% complete, allowing lights, diffusers, fire alarm to begin. The soffits, if you see in the middle picture there with Kevin adoring the progress. The soffits are drywall on the fascia. It's in process. The toilet rooms, the ceramic tile on the walls is complete. Classroom unit ventilators are in. The exterior wall paneling is complete and our next big milestone for the additions is the exterior windows. Those come in May. That will get us completely watertight and then we can start really working on the finishes that are a little bit more sensitive to humidity. So that's the additions. Brian, you want to, so here's a shot of the toilet room tile. We really think that's turning out quite well. And that's, that's looking through the door. And then this is just the collage. I wanted to give you a little bigger shot for the file that you have with you. So, but yes, you can see the casework installation is there next to the. And then the classroom ceiling grid and lights in.
Just to give you perspective, that doorway you can see as you're looking into the building is where it's boarded off so that students can't get in. Edition and the cubbies and so forth match the existing cubbies that the board voted to put in two or three or four years ago. So it'll be consistent throughout the building.
So then on to the renovation, we, they've had some really great cooperation with the district and we really appreciate the ability to pull this work ahead over break. The kindergarten E-wing unit ventilators were replaced. That is in process. They still have to do some finalization. But units are working, so we got those four units replaced. The line sets for the condensing units, now that's the air conditioning. All those line sets have been installed and those condensing units are being wired. And the crews continue to work forward on that to get the air conditioning in the classroom set. The classroom or the cafeteria flooring installation, we call it underway. I think it's pretty, pretty close to complete. The gym and the cafeteria were painted. The new gym wall pads are installed. We have replacement lights in the cafeteria, gymnasium, and what you see behind is the media center. And boy, the team noticed quite a difference of the light level, really brighten the space up. Some other areas, toilet rooms and various other rooms are either complete or underway with the lighting replacement. The abatement of asbestos that we took advantage of a couple breaks through, through the school year to take care of partial abatement. The rest of it won't occur until we're moved out for school. But as we're working in the evenings, above ceiling mechanical fire alarm work is ongoing and the new generator is set, piped and wired, ready to be commissioned, but that won't be final, final until we do the power change over in the summer, but we are getting everything placed as quickly as we can to avoid that crunch in the summer. So on to the middle school, the middle school, we do have what was the art area and the district administration area demo is complete. We've got temporary fencing going up around the north lot expansion. We've got underground plumbing in the admin administration areas complete that was done. Slab removed, pipe installed, inspected and concrete placed on Friday. The metal studs in the district admin area are complete. Drywall is in the process of what we would call topping out. So they're putting the sound walls that go to the deck and some of the firewalls, putting that high drywall up. And then the in-wall electrical takes place and then the rest of the drywall will go on. And then the stormwater detention or retention installation is set to be, is beginning this week. That's for the paving, so that's going to be the, I believe there are yellow or an orange plastic barrels that you'll see that will be part of the stormwater management system. So the next slide just shows you a little bit of the progress, so the picture on the left was kind of what it looked like beginning of the week. And then over to the right, that's Friday with the, with the freshly poured or placed concrete trenches over where the underground was put in that area for the sanitary sewer. So the, the middle school continues areas that we can, we are very appreciative of what we can get done in this break. Next slide is the high school. Now, the high school, we've been working in the auditorium. The lobby flooring has removals in process, getting pretty close to complete removal. The auditorium stage refinishing is underway. We've got the robotics. When we say foundations, that's for the block walls, the masonry block walls that are in process, really getting close to wrapping that up. The underground plumbing and robotics is complete. Moving on outside to the, to the site work, the topsoil removal and the prep is, is complete for the addition. Utility rerouting. Now, there were some things that weren't exactly as we planned, as has happens with renovate or additions. So we did have to move some things, nothing too terrible. But the, the team was nimble in finding solutions. The building pad, now that's the sand you see out there, that, that placement is continuing. It's pretty, pretty well complete. But you know, as we do more work, like the gym foundations, there'll always be a little bit more cleaning up of that to do. But the foundations, if you've been out there, you can see the concrete's being poured along the existing wall. Start to see the orange protective caps on the rebar going in. And then I believe, Brian, I think they were heading to the west wall. I didn't get out there today. I was out there Friday. But then they'll continue around the building with that foundation work and then the block will follow that. And then the stormwater retention installation is in progress. One thing that you're going to notice, and I should have mentioned this on Lee, is that you're going to see some things showing up to the site. Right now with the supply chain, the way it is, we are encouraging our contractors to get materials and get them to the site. So you see the structural steel had been delivered. We did that purposely because we wanted to make sure as soon as we got our order in, the delivery of steel deck and bar joists went from a six to eight week lead time to like a 26 week lead time. So we want to make sure we have the materials to keep our progress rolling. So you'll see, you may see some things show up. You may see some trailers show up. We're doing that to make sure this summer, when materials are tight to find, that we have what we need to continue our progress. So the next slide, Brian, I think it's just a couple of shots of the, yeah, the renovated areas for the stage. You can see the refinishing in process there, the sanding, that's in the process of being stained now and then robotics. That area is going to be a real cool transformation. And then the next slide, Brian. Just a little shot of the exterior gym there. So a lot going on. We're very appreciative of the district working with us to get this work rolling now. We take advantage of the weather and can take a pressure off. We still know that we're going to be, you know, we'll be working into the fall, but we'll be occupying the buildings in a substantial complete state. So the trick with these projects with the short summer season is there's always a little bit to finish, but we get you where we can hold class and that's, that's what we're tracking. And, and right now, everything is going well, great group of contractors, really good team out there. So we're, we're, we're fortunate in where we're at and at that, I'll turn it over for any questions.
Carrie, other than what you're saying is we're right on schedule.
Yep.
So far, so good.
Yep, and, and Brian keeps asking us as we do remove some areas, you know, have we found anything as it is right now? Minor thing popped up, but we haven't, we haven't uncovered any huge issues. So we're, we're, you know, knocking on wood here as I'm sitting here. But we do have a contingency, you know, in place to, to be able to handle if we do run into anything. But as it sits right now, the challenge that we do see, we have run into this again. The COVID-19 shortages of supply chain and workforce is something we're monitoring. So far, hasn't impacted us, but we're keeping an eye on it and we are enforcing the social distancing. You see our guys out there, they should be wearing masks, but they're not, and you see it, feel free to tell them, put their mask on. And, and that's something that we're, we're, we're keeping track of. When they're outside and they can distance, they don't necessarily have to have the mask, but if they're in the building, they should be wearing a mask. But we are, we are monitoring that and as it sits right now, everything we can do now helps us because we know we're not the only school being renovated this summer. So we're doing what we can to, to manage that.
Thank you.
I would just like to add, Jerry mentioned working with the district. It really has been a, the patience of the staff. We have located teachers, we've relocated offices. And everybody has been very supportive. As Jerry said, when all schools. So it will be a. Get ready, the, the less likely we're going to have issues at the end of the project. So they've been a great team to work with, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Next part of our agenda is presentation.
Turn it up, Mr. Wamsley.
State Champions Director. We, it's a champion. Your title is Mr. Reinhardt, our Director of Athletics Facilities.
As well as some of our, I think our, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Reinhardt.
Good evening. I have the pleasure of presenting to you some student athletes that have made some significant accomplishments this past athletic season. We're going to start with our cheer team, our varsity girls cheer team. They, they won a district championship over in Armada and they competed in the regional championship where they were able to advance themselves to a state final, which happened on March 26th at the Brussels Center in Michigan State. I just found out today from Coach Mathis that not only did they win a state title, they are also academic all-state as a team. So that's a outstanding accomplishment. They're honorable mention, all academic, all at all-state. And we had some individual cheerleaders that are also all academic all-state this year as well, meaning they have completed, they're working at school with a 3.8 GPA or higher. So this is also quite an accomplishment for Ella Allen, Isabella Cracchiolo, Gracie Ellis, Hannah Drew, Esther Lepiccolo and Sarah Michelasic. It's a, it was a fantastic season. It was an outstanding journey. There were some bumps in the road due to COVID protocol. We worked through some things, but I'm very proud to say that they battled through a lot of adversity and they were able to bring another state championship home, which happens to be the third one in the row, third one in a row for Richmond High School. So I'm going to go ahead and I'm going to announce all of our cheerleaders' names. If you would like, Mr. Wamsley, is it okay if they unmute themselves to wave?
Yeah.
Make a noise or sound so that the picture comes up on the screen.
Sounds good to me. So please unmute yourself when I say your name and, and give a wave so everyone can see you. Jenna Alexander.
Woo!
Ella Allen. Riley Bartoloni.
Hey.
Isabella Cracchiolo. Isabella Cracchiolo Alyssa de Blau Gracie Ellis
yay Gracie
Erin Hart Jenna Jaisley
hi
Hannah Drew Sky Jess Emily Johnson Victoria Keller Savannah Crivvy Annabelle Loftus Esther Lepiccolo
hi
Emily Machowski Sarah Michelassick Anna Moskwa Ava Moskwa Nicole Ostaszewski
hi
McKenna Parker Isabel Riggs Anne Laney Yake and now for our three fantastic coaches first Coach Lauren Riggs Coach Melena Shesniak and last but not least and I'm going to give Coach Kelly a little bit of time to speak about the team this year Coach Kelly Mathis
hi everybody I apologize my screen is not working so unfortunately you'll have to look at the little blob there first and foremost there are a bunch of kids that are on the call today but there are kids who are in drivers training and work and other things that were happening so unfortunately they weren't able to attend tonight but I know that the team as a whole as well as all of their parents are extremely appreciative of this opportunity to be recognized by Chris and Mr. Walmsley and all the administration and the board so thank you so much for taking time out of the meeting to do that tonight I know you have a lot to cover but I just wanted to again reiterate my gratitude for the school district and the administration that I have the pleasure of working for and working with every day obviously in a year like this with covid and everything that we have dealt with in over a year now has made coaching and and dealing with all of the things athletics academics everything for these teenagers has not been easy and working with the amazing people that I do makes my job easier so thank you very much for that I appreciate that more than you know and Chris I know that I don't say it to you often enough but thank you so much for making my job a a true pleasure to to have and to be a part of so thank you for that we did have some interesting things that happened as all athletic teams have and students as a whole with social distancing and kids being able to compete not being able to compete and I think we figured out that we had two practices in our entire season one being the day before our district tournament that our entire team was present at so under those circumstances going in and winning a district title and then going in getting out of regionals and getting back to the state finals was a feat in itself but to go out there and to be able to accomplish a a third state championship in a row after what seemed like so many years of fighting so hard and finishing in that runner-up spot these kids really came in every day and I preach to them to trust the process and I have for years and this year really truly was a year where they just had to trust whatever we told them to do and obviously they really did that because in the end on the day that mattered most was the day that they came out and left everything on the mat no question about it the other thing that I think is important publicly is to make sure and thank my middle school coach Tracy Parker and Maddie McEwen who stepped in and helped out when Tracy was in quarantine and then of course Lauren Riggs one of my assistants at the high school who comes in whenever she can is a volunteer coach to help but my right hand for many many years has been Melena Sesniak and the day of the state finals my sugar was over six hundred and she had to take the helm in the morning and get the kids started being warmed up and she's not on this call tonight because she's a nurse at McLaren and she's working today but it's important that I thank her and Lauren and Tracy and all of the parents for all of the support and the help that they've given us throughout the year and last but not least to my amazing family and Jake and Zach and my husband Tim are not on this call but Nicholas as always is on the call and I could not do what I do without them so thank you to everyone to the administration the school my coaches my wonderful girls for everything that they've done we wouldn't be where we're at without it being a complete team school and community effort so thank you from the bottom of my heart cheers to another great season we're very proud to be able to bring it home to you guys again
great job Kelly hey Kelly
yes
tell us who the girls are that are seniors please
we have twenty-three athletes on our team and we have one senior and
that's what I thought okay
yep so last year we graduated ten kids and thought we were going into a rebuilding year and hey if this is what a rebuilding year is like I'll take it every single year so
listen power to the women I love saying it and it's the third year in a row I've been able to say it great job
thank you so much
so thank you very much Coach Kelly and this is the fun part of my job I'm not done we had a individual wrestling state champion for division three is a two hundred and eighty-five heavyweight wrestler he won a state title just this weekend right before spring break if you didn't have an opportunity to see him wrestle you missed out he wrestles some some of these student athletes that make me look like I'm still in elementary school and is able to put them on their backs which is not an easy feat so Danny McKernan go ahead and unmute yourself and wave so everyone can see you I can see you in a car there congratulations Dan Coach Trend Preston Trend and Coach Day are both right now at a meeting trying to earn accolades for all of the wrestlers for the year and I believe it's the county meeting but I believe Coach Misco was able to come on tonight to speak a little bit about Dan so Coach Misco go ahead and unmute yourself and speak a little bit
hi there everyone um obviously Dan had a fantastic season for us you know he works incredibly hard which is you know not very common for you know some of the bigger guys that we work with but you know definitely the hardest working kid on the team and we're incredibly proud of him and on behalf of Brandon and Preston just wanted to say a huge thank you to the board and the administration for all your support this year you know we ended up only having a single contact tracing throughout the entire season which in our sport we didn't think that was possible so you know a big part of that was you guys allowing us to you know take our kids into virtual and to you know allow us to stay down at Kalamazoo for that week prior to the individual state tournament which was incredibly beneficial and you know Brandon especially just wanted me to convey how much we appreciate you guys' support and you know how much it means to us
thank you very much Sean I just like to personally say thank you to everyone it was an outstanding season and we're moving into spring sports here and fingers crossed I will be on here doing this in a couple months and I am able to announce another team that that bring brings home a large trophy for Richmond High School thank you very much and have a great night
thank you Chris
good job Dan McKernan Dan it's you know I've watched you all four years it's a lot more fun watching you in person than on a little screen but it is it still was very exciting and you are a very hard worker and you embody a champion so good job
okay we're going to move on we now have our instructional spotlight with the twenty twenty twenty-one teacher of the year
right so the celebrations just keep on happening so let me go ahead and share my screen okay and here we are I'd like to I'm beginning all right well first of all I'd like to say congratulations to all of our winners they were selected by nominations from their staff and their administration teams from each building and there was a whole nomination form they got to fill out and got to read some of those and plucked out some things from their teaching philosophy and we have student statements for each of the teachers so very exciting first of all we'd like to congratulate Ms. Jody Schroder she is a teacher at Lee Elementary she teaches second grade and I got the pleasure of going in and reading for her class and something that I personally noticed was just her high-yielding questions that she was asking the students during reading they were totally engaged and I was very impressed with the way that she was engaged with the digital learners the virtual learners and the in-person learners so bravo it's been a tremendous year and just amazing jobs this teacher I'd like to point out this student statement where she says Mrs. Schroder is an amazing teacher because she always has us do fun stuff you make Mondays fun you make centers fun and you are a nice teacher if you can make Mondays fun then you absolutely deserve this award so congratulations for everything that you do and you are on tonight I do see so if you would like to come on and share a few things we are celebrating you this evening if you don't want to that's okay too
no I'm I have no problem talking virtual all day long first off you know it's really been a crazy year in our classrooms and I want to thank my colleagues for nominating me because with all the changes that we have going on and all the responsibilities we have in our room when I saw how lengthy the form was that they had to fill out I really want to thank them for taking that time and doing that taking that time away from their classroom and doing that and it's just kind of an honor to be recognized by the people that you work with every day so thank you also to for the kind words Mr. Therea said and Mr. Walmsley and Mrs. Manguni and Mr. Koshin for their support every day
thank you
thank you Jody
thank you
our next next winner is Miss Krista MacLeod she is our middle school science teacher and one of the student statements that was brought up was how Ms. MacLeod is my favorite teacher because she makes learning fun Ms. MacLeod makes learning fun by having activities that we work with by ourselves or in groups the class is not boring because we don't just sit there and listen we do science I love that we actually get to the doing in this class and it's really wonderful Mrs. MacLeod is friendly and is a great science teacher Mrs. MacLeod is a great teacher that explains everything you need to know she always tries her best to get to know you and you can see that that's actually parallel to her own teacher statement she says that she really tries to build a lot of strong relationships with students throughout the years and that is evident in that student statement I love all of the hands-on learning experiences that she's able to provide for students so bravo and congratulations Ms. MacLeod
up Krista
and representing our high school is Mr. James Wagner you can see the student statement for him is Mr. Wagner gets the students involved and makes the class exciting to go to so kids enjoy learning he is so crucial to Richmond and he deserves this award more than anyone thank you for making school something to look forward to so I just love when when I go into his room what I notice is all of the hands-on practical high-yielding engagement strategies that he's using and all the really great fun activities that he's doing getting them involved with our CTE program marketing and business so thank you so much Mr. Wagner all of our all of our winners are going to go on and compete at the county level for each of their grade levels spans
congratulations to all three of our teachers
and I can't wait to share our progress with that
we're moving on to our instructional spotlight summer program and
right can we actually just stop for a moment and think wow we're actually going to discuss summer school learning camps it's been just a really long year and you know what the learning keeps on going so we are going to discuss all the great fun learning camps that we have planned for the summer for the students of Richmond our first camp is sponsored by the MISD it is going to be a virtual Kinder Connect camp it is for our pre-K students moving on into kindergarten during the fall and this camp is really neat because it's going to be a lot of hands-on learning so even though it is virtual the kids are going to be able to get a learning kit and you can see what it includes down here at the bottom they're going to get books they're going to get bookmarks Play-Doh rhyming cards journals it's a lot of hands-on stuff so it's going to be really fun it's going to build on their fluency skills that really crucial learning foundational skills and literacy such as phonemic awareness letter sound knowledge vocabulary comprehension and it's going to get them that kickstart that they need in order to be successful in kindergarten all of our
you're shared
here we go are you able to see it now
yes
all right perfect so here we go here is our Kinder Connect camp all of our camps are going to be from eight AM to noon and this camp starts June twenty-eighth and will end July twenty-second so you can see once again down here that the kids are going to get a nice interactive literacy kit it's going to be a mix of synchronous which is live instruction from their teacher as well as asynchronous tasks which means things that they're going to be able to do at home on their own so we look forward to seeing our little future kindergartners come to this camp the next camp we are going to run this summer is our virtual first grade fundamentals camp it is for our existing kindergarten kindergartners going into first grade for the fall once again the camp will start June twenty-eighth and go through till July twenty-second once again they're going to get their own kits it's going to have books journals bookmarks crayons it's very similar to the Kinder Connect they're still going to be getting that great fundamental literacy skills that they're going to need to be successful at the primary level the screen time is going to be balanced between the synchronous and the live instruction and the asynchronous which is the remote on your own instruction so that is what we're going to do and it's going to be really exciting we hope So, that is what we're going to do and it's gonna be really exciting. We hope to see everybody there. This camp is our STEM literacy camp. This is the first time that Richmond is gonna run this camp. Once again, it is for students that are entering second, third, and fourth grade. This is just such an amazing camp. Um, I've had the privilege of being able to see this camp. And it's just really incredible what they're able to do. Students are going to be able to come and families and pick up their own materials bin. They get an entire bin filled with consumable and non-consumable, um, kits and items that they're gonna be able to use. The themes of their units is all based on build it, explore it, explore nature and launch it. So, it's just gonna be a lot of fun. They get to build rockets. Um, they're gonna be able to explore. They're making bird's nests. It's gonna be just a really fun, great interactive camp. And of course, you bring in that science text and that high-yielding literacy. And you're gonna be able to get some great science and engineering activities, hands-on activities here for the summer program. Our next camp we are going to do is for middle school. It is for entering sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. Uh, the camp will be June 28th until July 22nd. Um, there will be no camp for any of these on Monday, July 5th, by the way. Um, this is based off of the work of Jill Buller. Um, a, she is a Stanford University. And it's out of the U-Cubed organization. Um, it's based off of the work of Carol Dwight, which talks about the growth mindset and how there's a lot of misconceptions when it comes to math and the mindsets that you need in order to achieve. So, it goes into the pivotal math mindsets, uh, and they're listed here below. So, the mistakes in speed, the number and flexibility, mathematical reasoning. So, they get to actually do that. And this camp is geared for students that really, um, aren't the most encouraged in math. They tend to think that maybe it's too difficult or it's too hard. And what they're gonna do is be able to break down that mentality so that we can achieve in mathematics, which is gonna be really exciting. Richmond is going to be hosting a middle school literacy camp for students entering fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. We are going to split this camp. So, five, six is together and seven, eight is together. So, we will have two sections of this. Um, this is all gonna be based on analyzing informational text. We know that there is a massive curricular shift in middle school when it comes to informational text. And this class is going to be optimizing on that. Once again, the class is from 8:00 AM to 12:00, Monday through Thursday. And they're gonna be able to analyze high-interest informational text. And they're going to be going over, um, items from the Common Core and the Michigan State's, uh, Standards for English, Craft and Structure, Key Ideas and Details, Integration of Knowledge and Ideas, and Vocabulary Acquisition. And our last camp, we are going to be hosting a credit recovery for high school students needing to make up a lost credit. This camp is our longest camp and it is going to be from June 21st and ends August 12th. We are going to be using the Edgenuity Curriculum, um, formerly known as E2020. This course is self-paced and so it can be completed early. The students are going to be able to have a supervisor, uh, from Richmond in this class. And they are gonna be able to check in with this supervisor as needed. And they're also gonna be able to get instructional support from the Edgenuity team as well. So, there's lots of support for students that need this extra boost. And of course, this is geared for students that need to make up a lost credit in order to graduate. And that is our summer offerings for this year.
It is our preference to have in-person summer programs. However, with the number of structure projects, we have no facilities to host in-person summer programs. We have, uh, our two parochials that we- needs and it- rented facilities. I have neighboring- moving. There, there's- Right now, that's why we're going to virtual. High school. For those kids, um, with that mentor that, uh, Mrs. Ari talked about. And hopefully in the next couple of weeks, if we can, that, we got a couple of options that, um, we're looking at, um, as a temporary occasion, but- But, um, we don't have the physical space this summer, um, to host in-person classes. So, that's why it's virtual. Tell them a little bit about the success we've had with the credit recovery.
Yes, um, so we just ended our first session for our credit recovery program. And we had several students complete credits. We've actually had new students come along to sign up for session B as well, which starts today. We were able to have them all be very excited. Actually, Mr. Ogilvy, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but he's our ELA teacher for the credit recovery. They read a fantastic book. The kids were so enthusiastic about reading this novel. They understand that this was like a second chance for them. And just some of the responses that the students were giving, just that they were just so grateful for this opportunity. And we had several students complete lost credit as of right now in just a six-week period. We're starting our second six-week period and I'll be able to update you on how exactly how many we have had, um, successful credits earned. But so far, everything has been just really wonderful. The kids are really receptive to it. And the program has been going very smoothly and they're, it's self-paced. So, they're able to juggle their current cla- uh, class load as well as their recovered credit as well.
Your programs are at no cost to families as well as the credit recovery. We've been, we're paying them through 31A and the extended summer literacy grants that we received. So, we're trying to give as many opportunities, uh, especially helping families. Our district is not in this position. We start with the loss of instruction because we've been going since September. But there, there- You had to take out of the day, uh, to do hand washing and just the COVID protocols. There's less instructional time. So, it's our hope that this will help, uh, and continue our, our students' growth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. I have a question.
Yep. Um, Renee, I'm assuming that the camps are unlimited, the amount of people that can sign up for it. Is that correct? Being it's their virtual, or is there a limit?
There is a capacity.
Okay.
For the first grade fundamentals and the Kinder Camp, it's about 20 students. The STEM literacy is about 15. And the math mindset is running 16 to 20. And the, um, the Richmond literacy one is gonna be around 20. Cause you want a smaller class size to be able to help them. But you also still want to be able to offer enough so that enough people, you know, get, get the experience too.
Right. And when can people start registering?
The MISD is giving us flyers this week. So, once I edit those, they will go out to, um, building administrators and those will go out by next week.
Okay. And then our, um, at the, I know for the credit recovery, you talked about there will be a Richmond, um, person. Will there be Richmond people for the other camps too, or is this through the ISD, ISD people?
The ISD is sponsoring some of the camps, but it's all gonna be Richmond's teachers.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Renee. Okay, our final presentation is our 2022 budget.
Okay. For the FY22 school year, um, there are, my hope is that we have, um- So, I talk about three basic concepts, three pivotal concepts that, um- What are the assumptions going to be? That becomes a dirty- Been sort of a budget for, for next year. Our best guess. Second is to talk about our revenue assumptions as well as- anticipate to be a foundation allowance. And the third is to- About a classroom. Process with the classroom mine. Uh, how many, uh, basically do we anticipate needing for next? That, that assumption based on, I have, you know. Share a couple of screens. Just give me a second here.
Brian, I think you're breaking up really. I don't know if it's being conveyed to the audience, but it's breaking up as you're talking in my ear.
I'm wondering, if we all mute while you're talking? So, board members, please mute. By Mr. Wamsley.
Let's try, let's try that. Okay. Okay, so in front of you, um, and hopefully you can see this, is a chart we've used for the past several years. And on the left side, you'll see the grade levels. Grade 30 represents our ECSE program. Kindergarten is represented by zero all the way through 12th grade. And then if we had any parochial schools, FTS, um, in previous years, we used to service them for gym, art, music, et cetera. Uh, we no longer do that. So, that you'll see there, it was zeroed out in the 15, 16 school year. You'll see two columns per year. You'll see our October count day and our February count day. These current school year for the 2021 school year are not officially audited yet. But we're, we're pretty close that this is what, this is what it's based on. Um, this year, the legislature changed the way you calculate your FTS. In previous years, it was 10% of your February count and 90% of the October count. And then you add the two together and that's what your blended FTE count was. And that's what we would, um, that's what we would get paid for by the state on that FTE. So, for instance, if you look at this October 20 column and the February 20, this is our current numbers. This year, the state changed it to an 80/20 and it's, it's not as simple as an 80/20. There's some different calculations. This, what you have in front of you would be a 90/10 block count because that's what's in the, um, there's no indication in the governor's proposal that they're going back to the 80/20 that they had this year. Everything is in, it leading towards that it would be a 90/10 and so forth. The challenge we have at this point compared to where we were in previous is we only have the governor's budget. We do not know where the House budget or the Senate budget is gonna be on, on, on the education front. So, if we take our numbers of where we fell in February and we moved the students up a grade level, the FTE. I made the assumption, uh, on this particular graph, that our ECSE program stays. That's, um, that could fluctuate based on IEPs and, and the number of kids we have in the area. Uh, I made the assumption, I looked at, actually, this number is based on an average of, um, excuse me, it's, it's the current year of, that we have 108 kindergartners going into next year. Moving them up, you can see if you did a 90% column for the, um, fall and 10% on the February, our actual number we should project would be down. However, what I want to point out is for the last three years, our October to October difference has not been down. And a lot of that is attributed to school of choice. It attributes to people moving into our community with younger families, with the economy getting better and people being able to afford houses. We had that lull where, you know, where we had a, a huge drop in enrollment. So, the question as, as a collective group would be, we could take a very conservative approach and budget down students. And if we have more, we could, um, add staff. It's not as easy as just reducing staff because we're down students, particularly at the secondary level. Because I made down one or two kids in a class, I still gotta run a teacher. I'm not getting any reduction. Or as you can look at the previous trends, we have been on our, on our October count, which is where majority of the fun is, more than the previous year. So, for instance, if you look at October 20, we're at 1489, October of 19, 1466, and October of 18, 1428. So, we can take the position of either moving kids up and seeing where we are. Now, some of these students in this, in October 21 column are our school of choice. We know we gained families this year because of the in-person offerings that we were. And families have made statements that their plan is to return to their home district, but they school of choice because their home district was virtual or so forth. Maybe they don't, maybe they'll change their mind. I, you know, we don't know that. Or we can make this assumption that we're gonna go flat. So, whatever our enrollment is currently, let's just keep it at that current number. Or you can make the assumption that we are increasing. You know, we, we have in the past used the pro, we've moved kids up a grade. And we use that number as our, our, our budgetary FTE number. If, if the board wants to continue that, then I would build the budget based on 160 or excuse me, 1469-ish kids. When we do the blended count of the February, if the board wants to take the position, let's keep a flat enrollment, no increase, no decrease. Or, um, I wouldn't recommend it, but you could also say we're gonna increase enrollment. That's a gamble because once kids start and if they don't show up, it is very hard to reshuffle schedules and take students out of a teacher's class and shuffle classes. It's a, um, it's much easier if we have more kids than we expected to add a teacher and they lower class sizes than to tell a parent, I'm gonna take a student out of a class and raise class sizes. So, that would be our, our first conversation that we're gonna need to establish, what FTE do we wanna, uh, down, flat, or increase? And we've got a couple valid arguments in, in going down. You got a couple valid arguments of going flat. But you could make an argument of, we've been showing increases for the last three years. Housing is changing or very quickly in this, in this area. There's new building going up. In your board packet, you see a Stanford, uh, enrollment projection. That document, it's, it's pretty complicated, but there's three different ways that you could look at it percentage-wise. And they do show in this area that our enrollment overall should be going up, which is what we use when we had to, when we started going to the, to the voters for the bond, that we should be showing on an increase based on, uh, population trends, birth and, and death rates in the area. So, that would be the first conversation I, I'd like to have with the board is where do you, where do we feel comfortable with? Because this becomes our starting point. Cause this number, whatever we decide, is what we multiply by the per pupil that we get from the state and that builds the rest of the budget. So, any thoughts from any board members on what they-
I would be comfortable going, staying flat.
So, was you, Sherry?
Yes.
Deb Michon, same thing. I say we stay flat.
I agree as well.
You're saying flat is just moving-
Just move everybody up.
Yeah, I feel like that makes the most sense.
So, we'll budget, if we were flat, the October 2021 will be based on basically having 1475 kids in October and then doing the 90/10 blend of that.
Cause Brian, we, as you and I talked, we can always make a budget amendment.
Absolutely.
As we move in and it changes, we can make an adjustment.
From now till you have to approve the budget in June, there are gonna be so many moving variables that it is, it is the best guess estimate that the board can make. Because we don't know at this point what the, you may not know what the per pupil occasionally will be till June. Last year, we didn't know till August. We assume something. We assume that's what we're being told. So, I mean, I, I, I said, I, from my position, I feel comfortable with flats. Or if you want to be very conservative going down, I'm a little uncomfortable predicting an increase. That's because we don't know where things are gonna be with COVID and, and families and so forth. That we disagreed on flat. We're gonna go with a flat number. So, we can start building the budget going forward with flat. Okay, so then the second part is now that we have a, a starting point for FTE with flat, let's look at revenue assumptions. I'm gonna put up on the screen, but I printed these for the board now. So, at this point, let me stop sharing here. So at this point, let me stop sharing here.
Thank you.
And Tammy, if you want to join us at this point, there are two, two sheets that I'm going to share on the screen for you. One is the broad spectrum of where we get our revenue from. And the second one is going to be, these are some assumptions that we can start making at this point. And that's what we're going to have to, where do, where do we know, where do we feel comfortable at, at this point? So I'm going to ask Tammy to kind of talk about the thirty thousand foot on, on the different revenue sources.
Okay, hello everyone. When we look at the, the columns, we really have four sources of revenues. We have local sources, state sources, federal sources, and then we get some money from intergovernmental, from both McCombs ISD and New Haven schools. If you look at the far right column, that is what we're projecting for the twenty twenty, I'm sorry, twenty twenty one, twenty two budget at this point in time. Local revenues, we don't know yet what our property tax values will be. Those will be available in May. Once we have those, we can calculate actual property tax revenues projected for next year. Our summer school tuition, we aren't charging anything, so that revenue is reduced to zero. We're still not planning to charge gate receipts or play admissions, so they're both at zero. We don't, sometimes we get donations for certain projects around the district, like scoreboards. And we put in a revenue line for that local donation and then reflect the expenditure in the expenditures. We're not expecting anything at this point, so that's been zeroed out. And then we're assuming normal non-pandemic amounts for local revenues, including transportation, field trips, pay to participate, childcare fees, preschool tuition, other facility rentals. We do have the New Haven shared services, what we're not sure of, but has been zeroed out at this point, the Roosevelt Civic Auditorium status. So once that's known, we can take that into account.
So when you look at the local revenue, as Tammy said, we will know property taxes, we'll get that in May. The summer school that we run this summer actually gets charged to next year's budget. We didn't run it last summer, so we zeroed that out in this budget currently. So gate receipts is the question, is do we think that we will be in a normal circumstance where we'll have spectators? Because gate receipts account for quite a bit of our local revenue that we get. Right now, we zeroed it out, because this year we obviously aren't collecting gate receipts. So we can make the assumption that we keep it at zero. Or, or make an assumption we're going to gain gate receipts. I can't tell you at this point where I think next year is going to fall, I'm going to be honest with you. I think there's going to be some type of restrictions, some type of, I'm, I'm hoping it's not where we are now, but I can't say that it's not going to be. You know, we haven't been renting out our facility, like we have several dance studios that would rent out the auditorium, so that we lost that revenue. We've adjusted childcare fees, tuition, we've prorated preschool tuition fees and so forth. So we're, in some areas, we can assume that our childcare, kids will start, our, our own students will be able to start going on transportation, field trips again. So we collect, you know, fees for your field trips, and then we pay it through transportation to pay for the fees. You know, pay to participate, we're in the process of, of prorating those right now. There's a couple teams that we got to double check the schedules on, but based on the board's actions. So there's some unknowns for the local assumptions. And I guess this is where, as we start talking about, where do we, are any of these that we feel that we should be budgeting what we normally would have budgeted? Like for instance, I believe our gate receipts, we would normally have budgeted around, Tammy, is about fifty thousand dollars?
I bet, yes, that'd be my rate.
Now it's zero, five, fifty thousand, yes. Now from that gate receipts, then we would also, you know, pay volunteers and reduce the paid up participation fees, but actually, that would be from pay to participate, I'm sorry. Right now, we zeroed it out, you know, being more conservative. If we think that we're going to be able to have gate receipts in the fall, then we could put a line item, maybe it's not fifty thousand, maybe it's something in between. Preschool tuition, you know, so far, all, all our numbers, I don't have the current numbers here, we'll have them at the next meeting. But registration's going well with our preschool and kindergarten. So I, I mean, I, I feel solid that we're going to have a, obviously, some, the, at least the same preschool programs we have this year. I just don't know how many in a class when all the dust settles. So a lot of that, a lot of those registrations, we don't get till the summer. So let's go on to the next one, then we can come back as you, as you're thinking about. So Tammy, let's do the state revenue.
Okay. Right now, we're, we projected in, you know, the budget that Brian showed you earlier, enrollment projection to be flat, which is what we've agreed on as an assumption for next year. The foundation, we've budgeted right now in this projection to be flat, because only the governor's proposal has been released at this point. We have nothing from the House and Senate. The governor did include a hundred and sixty four dollar increase. If that comes through, we would add another two hundred and forty thousand to our total revenues. Under Section eleven D, because of the way they prorated foundation this year, we were in a district that had an increase. We received ninety seven thousand dollars. One-time revenue, so we projected that at zero. Other state categorical revenues, we, and, and GSRP revenue, we assumed at this year's amount with no increases. The two thousand nineteen competitive school safety grant project, we included a hundred and forty one thousand in the current Second Amendment. That's eliminated for next year because the project is complete, that was the high school door project. So that's how we budgeted our state revenues at this point.
So some of these where you see a loss of revenue, like for instance, the competitive school, there will also be a reduction in expenses, because we're not going to have that line item anymore. But there are some, like the categorical eleven D, there's no indication, at least in the governor's budget, that there's going to be that line item there next year. So it was kind, it was one-time money that we got. Questions on state revenue?
I think basically the question here is the foundation, are, are we comfortable with a flat? Do we want to change it to something else, or do we want to just keep it flat at this point?
When we say the foundation, our per pupil allocation that we currently have this year, if you recall, they cut us a hundred and seventy five dollars, and then they gave us CARES money, S, S R money, and gave us three fifty. So we really have a, for the foundation, a cut of one seventy over the eighteen nineteen, eighteen twenty school year, I think back by year. From the basic per pupil foundation, we're a hundred and seventy five less than we were in the nineteen twenty without using the CARES money or grant, because those monies are going to dry up. So the state's either got to replace it with something else and so forth. Normally, at this time, I could probably say with certainty, we at least have an idea what the legislature and the Senate and the House are going to do. So we could take a position of, okay, let's just budget whatever the lowest is of the three as a conservative, because that's at least what, minimally what they all agree on. I can't, I can't give that to you today. So we can either budget on what we have this year and move forward. And then if that changes, it only, if we get money, it only helps our situation. Or we can budget on a, an increase, some type of increase. And what do we feel comfortable? And I, I'm, I'm very nervous about that, because I never know what they're going to do with the political games on that. That's the piece I, I don't know. Tammy, let's keep going to, to federal.
Okay. Under federal revenues, we had some two thousand nineteen carryover, carryover revenue and expenditures in this year's budget that will be gone for next year, so those have, that revenue's been reduced to zero. Then this year, we had several different categories of coronavirus funds coming in. We had S R one, we received some CARES money from the McCombs ISD. When we did our device purchases, we received some grant money, rebates on those devices. There were some childcare relief grants that we received. And then, then the state just had various, or, you know, a few COVID nineteen allocations. In total, that was eight hundred and eighty one thousand, two hundred and eight dollars for this year's budget. We're assuming those are one-time things for this year only, and we've reduced those to zero for next year. But for next year, we're assuming we will get the S R two money, which is seven hundred and twenty five thousand, and about a third of our, the one point seven four million dollar allocation for S R three, which is about five hundred and eighty two thousand. So those two items totaling over almost thirteen, one point three million are in the budget under federal revenues at this point. And you can see, if you look back at the other chart, there is a, an increase in federal revenues. And that's why, it's because of the change from S R one monies to S R two and three monies.
So S R two is the one that we've received forty percent of, that's been allocated. And there is the other sixty that is coming once they get an agreement. S R three was the one that was just recently passed by the federal government March-ish. I think the one, almost two trillion dollar stimulus package, I don't know what else to call it. For our allocation for a district, that's one point seven four, so, which can be spent over three years. So our recommendation is we take the position of taking a third of that each year, knowing at some point, whatever we charge to that, in the end of three years, we're going to have to find another source to make up that money. You know, the likelihood of another stimulus in that point, I, I don't know, it's a crystal ball, I guess. But, you know, in the money that we, that eight hundred and eighty one thousand, two hundred and eight dollars, we allocated one FTE of a counselor in that money. So we can continue that, so it doesn't hit the general fund, assuming the S R three has the same flexibility that we had with the other ones in the, in that five hundred and eighty two thousand. So continuing that. But again, at the end of that three years, we're going to have to make a, a decision on where we're at. And finally, Tammy, you want to do inner district?
Yes, the majority of our inner district source money comes from the McCombs ISD, the Enhancement Village. This is the first year we've collected, and it's over six hundred thousand. Again, when the property tax values come out in May, we'll be able to get an estimate of our allocation for next year from the McCombs ISD.
So minimally on that, that summary sheet, we have what we received this year.
That's correct.
With, with housing values up, I, I would predict it will increase, I just don't know how much. And that's where in, in May is when we're going to get that closer to that dollar figure. So I'll go back to that summary sheet. So everything that Tammy talked about on that sheet is summarized in this, these columns here. So I guess the question for any of the board members out there, is there anything that you feel uncomfortable with some of these assumptions at this point? Again, this is very fluid, next board meeting, I could have a different story if something comes out from the, you know, the House and Senate budget comes out, or, you know, we, we, you know, they have, they introduce more categoricals and so forth.
I had one question about the odd. So assuming that the rental is reduced to zero, can you tell, I know that that included utilities and rent and all that, so it covered some of it. Was there any other cost?
For the odd?
Yes, over and above that?
No, the cost, the utilities was, was pretty much a wash. The money take it in, pay the utility bills we received, that was a wash. The rental paid the premium for the insurance on the building. So we have had some costs, not a lot, like repairs to the boiler or maintenance, very little, but we've had some. It won't significantly impact the budget.
Okay.
But there has been some minor, like we had some parts we had to replace on the boiler this past year, some boiler inspections that we do annually. They're, they're not significant.
Okay.
But.
All right, thank you.
So Brian, I would agree, under the local revenue, that we just leave them zero, the, the ones where we're looking at gate receipts, rental, and, and leave them at zero. I just feel like we can't guess at this point what that's going to be. I mean, I just don't want to guess, I just don't feel like it. I've also, under the state revenue, say we go flat and just stay with what we know right now until we can, like you say, maybe in a month or two here, we'll have some different numbers to look at. But to start budgeting, that's what I think we should start with.
Absolutely, it's the smartest way to do it, and it's really how we've been doing it for the last however many years.
That sounds good to me. You can always amend it.
Yeah, and as, as the board knows, you may be in a position to have to build a budget or approve a budget in June that is completely speculation, because you have no direction from the state. But, so what we will do is, so with a, with a flat, if we take these assumptions, the next step is to look at the expense side of the equation. So our largest expense is teachers. Just because that's the business we're in, and that's the, the largest group that we have. So when I look at enrollment numbers, this year, we have five kindergarten sections, five first grade sections, fourth, second grade, five third and four fourths. If we move those kids up, because I assume they're here, that would mean the five first grades are going to second grade next year. But we only have four sections right now. So we would need to add a section of second grade to make five sections of second grade. If we did that, their numbers, their class would be twenty one, twenty two with five sections. If we didn't do five sections and we did four, your, forward into that is twenty, twenty six, twenty, no, excuse me, excuse me, no, twenty seven, twenty eight kids in a class. That's a lot of kids. And there right now, as of today, there's a hundred and six bodies of second graders. So we have twenty one, twenty two in a class now. On average, there may, there may be one class that's higher and lower, but on average, based on what's, what's registered. So my recommendation would be to add a fifth second grade section, so that we can keep the numbers manageable to educate.
Make that part of, part of the process, throw it in there, that you want to have the, the extra section as we go through doing.
So when I, exactly, so when I bring the expense next week, and I'm going to bring it by, by the groups, we know there are some groups that have settled contracts, so their contracts, we have to build in this, already, we know there's a set increase. We know healthcare has gone up for next year. I think it's, it's one of our largest increases. Tammy, what was the number, do you remember, was it three point, three percent?
It was the highest, about three point seven, I think.
Three point seven percent with the cap. So we know our healthcare cap and, and numbers are going up. We know the retirement costs are going up about a little over a percentage. Four, forty two point seven two to forty three point nine some?
Something like that.
Yeah, so it's, we know about a percentage more in retirement costs. You think about, for every dollar, we're now spending almost forty three, forty four percent in a retirement, or have to budget the expense for. So when I look at the numbers, if we're budgeting flat, I don't see any reduction at the high school from a teaching perspective. What I would see is we may add a body, because I have several teachers teaching on their prep, that I got to try to get not teaching on their prep and make every effort so that they have a schedule, which may result in, I'm just taking the salary, may not change, I'm taking it off a prep period to create a salary for a person. But now I'm going to have an increase in healthcare and the other benefits that a teacher would have if I'm adding a body at the high school. Middle school, we have a hundred and ten third graders, currently five sections of third grade, heading to the middle school. That would put those class sizes twenty three, twenty, no, excuse me, twenty five, twenty seven, twenty eight in a class, going from twenty one, twenty two higher, because we're going from five to four. I would look at adding another fourth grade section and having five fourth grades. Now, we can budget the kindergarten, we currently have five, and in the past, we have always not budgeted for all of them, maybe only four. And move that allocation to one where we show an increase. And if all the kindergartners do come. Then we look at that in August and we add it and that becomes part of the amendment. But I'm concerned with the number, our third grade numbers going to the middle school and putting from five sections down to four sections. We had planned it when we did the budget or the bond project, we planned for a fifth, fourth grade section. So that room is being renovated to have the same as the other four. So I have fourth grade and second grade are the two areas that I would be looking at adding a teacher. But I could reduce one at the kindergarten from a budgetary.
Brian?
There'll be the same five.
I have a question. You have, uh, you have four second grade classes right now, moving up to third grade. So one of the teachers you say you're add, you won't need one in third grade if you still only have four sections.
I have, we have currently a five kindergarten, five first, four second, five third and four fourth. I would recommend keeping the five third grade section and taking that group of four and making five sections out of them.
Oh, okay.
No, he, Sherry, he was talking, increase the second grade because the first, first grade was so high.
I would increase the second grade, one teacher would have five classes.
K through four would all have five sections.
Five. My recommendation would budget one through four, five sections with kindergarten, four sections.
And to wait and see.
As we see in the summer, like we've done in the previous year, if I put, if we put that section back in kindergarten, I could reassign a teacher before the start of school. Maybe one of the kindergarten in that spot. It's not ideal.
I agree. It's not ideal. Um, currently we have, um, five kindergarten teachers teaching five grades or five different classes. Is that correct?
We have five kindergarten teachers teaching five kindergarten classes. That is correct.
So if we went down to only four kindergarten teachers, what would happen to that fifth in the meantime?
That fifth, I would either reassign that, a teacher to second grade to make five sections. And then we're only adding. If you want to keep right now, the numbers, we're, we're not officially, we're not officially registered in kindergarten. So we don't have the numbers to warrant five sections. Will we get closer? I really believe we will. I believe we're going to be closer to what we have this year. But right now.
Most comfortable budgeting for a teacher, extra for all three kindergarten, second and fourth grade.
So the net total by doing it. The net, doing it that way would be two more teachers added to a second and a fourth grade.
Correct.
Kindergarten till the numbers show where our net is only one that you're budgeting in June. So Angela, you, you're comfortable with all five?
Correct. I would not, I would, I anticipate us still needing five kindergarten teachers. And also eventually, like Sherry said, K through four, we may even need five sections through all of them eventually.
You can look at your kindergarten numbers here. This year we were, February is 108, 105, we were as high as 113, 103. Several years ago, we were we had low as 74 and 15. And now we are 108. At a high of 113 last year.
I guess my question, if we say eventually, but we're only talking about what we need to do for next school year. And we're going by the numbers that we have in the grade levels that we have. Right? So I don't understand the eventually.
Well, we currently do not have enough staff at the elementary, correct? So to now eliminate another teaching position.
What do you mean? We don't have enough staff at the elementary?
Well, support staff amongst other things. And if teachers need to have some time off, we don't have a lot of subs available. I'm just saying, I would just be very uncomfortable. Not keeping.
Right. But having, but having subs. Right. But having subs doesn't have anything to do with this conversation. It's talking about teachers. We have enough teachers.
Eliminating anymore.
Angela, Angela, let's what? Okay. Let Margaret finish and then Angela, you can finish, please. Okay, Margaret, what was your point, please?
Well, my point is just, we're, we're not, the conversation's not about subs in the buildings and that. It's about the number of teachers and increasing the second grade and increasing the fourth grade. We have enough teachers at Lee Elementary right now at Richmond Schools for this school year. That's not the conversation.
And I would like that to continue next year. That's why I mentioned that.
Okay. But how about if you let me finish talking?
I just say Angela, let her finish, please, and then I'll have you speak. Okay. Thank you. Go on, Margaret.
So I lost my train of thought, but I, my, my point is just if we're just talking about the second grade and the fourth grade. Right? That's, that's the conversation. Do we want to increase the second grade and the fourth grade? And I think, I haven't heard anybody say they don't want to do that. Right? I mean, that's if the numbers, the way we're moving numbers. And then if I understand the kindergarten, the, the five spots, we very well could need those five spots. Once the registrations come forward. Is that what you're saying, Brian?
Correct. That's typically, we, we typically do not have enough for five sections in the last several years in June. Where it comes is over the summer in July and August, when they start realizing they have to register their child because it might be their first child that they.
Sure. But just because we're going to maybe not need five sections of kindergarten, we don't lose a teacher. That teacher could go to second grade. So we wouldn't be, it's not like we're going to lose somebody if we don't have the five spots.
Correct. Nobody, nobody in this plan is being reduced in any level.
Okay.
Maybe a teacher or two, depending on scheduling at the secondary, that we're adjusting where they're at. Nobody's, we're not losing any teachers.
Okay. Okay. Angela, do you have anything to add to that?
I do. Um, I just worry about eliminating a kindergarten teacher again, and then struggling last minute to find a teacher. Because sometimes we have lost a teacher in the process or had to rejuggle and not know what to do weeks before school started. So I don't want to fall into that situation. It seems like we have needed five grades or five sections of kindergarten for at least since I've been on the board. So I don't understand why there's even a discussion of not having that next year.
Okay. Thank you. Just my thought, I, I understand, I'm fine with moving up everything we talked about and going with the five. But I do understand the four there only because, you know, we don't have the numbers. We don't know where those numbers are. And I know we're just looking at this now. We can always change this assumption. We're given Brian right now is just something to start with. So I think the question here is, do we want to just do five across? Or do we want to do four at that kindergarten and then five the rest, one up to four?
I, I guess the part of the reason why I'm asking is because if we, if our goal is to keep class sizes as low as possible. Which has really been what the, the, the focus has been. Now, if I know that I need to add one or two more F Ts, when I come at the next, when we come to the next board meeting, Tammy and I would, okay. By adding those, these are the new expenses. Now here, here are the secretarial expenses here, the parapros, assuming we're keeping everything as is, if there are terms of numbers. Not reducing any. Now you can see the impact because I gotta, we have to build in the increase in healthcare and the increase in retirement costs that we know is coming. That's a given. That's already been decided.
Okay. But are you? But I thought you were asking us for an increase for a second grade teacher and a fourth grade teacher. When the conversation turned towards the kindergarten, I thought the conversation, what you were saying, and if I misunderstood, please tell me that based on the numbers that we have right now for kindergarten registration, we might not need five spots. So in that case, if we don't need five spots. One, a kindergarten teacher could fill that extra second grade spot, right? We weren't talking about eliminating five kindergarten spots yet because we don't know, right? Am I understanding that correctly?
Correct. My, my.
You just wanted to add a second and a fourth.
My recommendation is to plan for a, a fifth second grade and a fifth, fourth grade. But at this point, only four kindergartens. That would be my recommendation to you. If, if in a month, we get another 40 kids kindergarten registered, which they typically come over the summer. I may have a different, I may say five before June, but right now we don't have the numbers to run five sections of kindergarten. Based on what's, what's registered, what's completed registered. There's a lot in the, um, docket.
So what you're really looking at is, you're looking to either hire, should I budget to hire one or should I budget to hire two?
Correct.
So wouldn't it, to me, it seems like it would be better to budget for hiring two because we can always get that money back if we only end up hiring one. Essentially into that, but that money would go back into the budget. So why, you're, what I'm hearing from you is that you're, you're recommending that we just budget for hiring one. Should we just budget for hiring two? Because we can always get that money back? If we don't need it?
I, I wouldn't recommend that for this reason. If you're a, a, a teacher with benefits, retirement, all that base salary is with FICAN retirement, all that is about 70, 75,000. If I'm asking you to budget for just one, I'm asking you to increase the expenses about 70, 75,000. If I'm asking you to two, now we're 140, 150,000. In order, if you're not getting the revenue, we're going to have to make a reduction somewhere else to pay for that or pay for it using fund balance. Using, you know, part of our fund balance to balance our budget because you have to approve in June that balanced budget. So the more expenses you add now, the more we're going to have to find how we're going to pay for it if we're assuming these revenues are flat, we're not getting anything from the state, if we're assuming all, you know, all the other stuff that we talked about, there's not a lot of revenue in there. So my recommendation is budget for one. We know four kindergartens. We know of all these students stay or even majority of them stay, we have valid reasons for five sections of each one. We budget that, that which would net us one more F T E. And I guess I see where you're coming from.
I like seeing that extra money though. If we cut it and then we have the ability to give it back after June or after budgets finally come out because, or kindergarten enrollment finally comes out and we only in fact need for. Then we have the ability to kind of redisperse that money back and kind of increase other people's budgets that we may have you know, shrunk down a little bit before. That's just my thought.
The challenge would be on the flip side of putting it in the budget and finding where you're going to get the revenue to pay for. If we're assuming flat, or few both. And we're assuming that, that's the bigger challenge for us at this point.
I guess, I guess for me, I think it's a, thinking four kindergarten and then five for the rest is a great starting point. Excuse me, uh, because you know, we're not locked into anything until the end of June. I mean, it can all change. It's going to change four or five times or more between in the next two months. So I understand your point, but I think if we need to do that, we can do that. We, I think we got what six, seven more meetings before we actually vote on it. I think it's a good start to start with four kindergarten and five the rest. And then, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a moving target.
Angela, you good with that?
Sure. That's what the majority of the board would like to go with that direction. Sure. I just, I, I just known since I've been on, we've done that every year. And then we end up having to add a kindergarten teacher on. So I would just think to save us all some trouble. And, um, to put our employees at ease, it might be worth it to, you know, plan for that. But, and it seems like we will have it in the general fund, but if you guys want to start with four, I'm okay with that. Sure.
Okay. So what will happen at the next meeting is we're going to now cost out the expenses by group. We're going to bring the, the teacher group, which is 111, 112, 113 and the various other one. We're going to bring the secretarial group, administrative group, para pro. Everything comes together now to say, okay. As is based on current contract language, this is what that group's going to cost us. And now we start deducting from the revenue. So Tammy and I will now take the revenue of assumptions with the flat enrollment. And now begin building the next phase of the budget. Okay?
Brian, did you see how many current, how many kindergartners we have enrolled right now?
I did not, I did, I thought I grabbed everything. I did not grab all that sheet, but I will get, I can email you that number if the board wants it. Okay. Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Walmsley. Um, our next is public comments. If there's any member in the public that wishes to address the board, please state your name and you'll have three minutes to address the board. Is there any public comments? I'm going to look. So if you acknowledge. We have Pamela Hornberger.
Hi. Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Excellent. Um, uh, your superintendent Walmsley and I spoke last month. I am the state representative from the 32nd district. And I'm also the education chair of, in the House of Representatives. So for clarification, I'm a state representative and not a senator. Last, um, meeting, uh, your superintendent was going over some bills or legislation that had been enrolled in the Senate, but had not gone through a Senate hearing yet. And misspoke and actually identified me as one of the bill sponsors. Which I believe led to some very disparaging comments about me by one of your board members. So I'm here just to clarify that those are Senate bills. I did not enroll them. And, um, as, uh, Mr. Walmsley knows, um, from our meetings, uh, at the superintendent's, um, meetings at the I S D. I am always more than happy to answer any questions. If you ever have questions about school budget, like you were just talking about, or any bills that you're hearing about being enrolled in the Senate or the House. If I can answer those questions for you, I would appreciate, um, you reaching out to me. Um, Mr. Walmsley has my phone number. I've spoken to him many times at the I S D. More than happy to clarify for you. Um, and if you have any questions about the bill process, I'm happy to, um, clarify those things also, but it's pretty disheartening to get a phone call in the evening that one of your board members is saying some pretty visceral things about me. During your meeting, I got a phone call and then was getting text messages. So again, I, I'd be happy to clarify instead of having those things happen. It's pretty much uncalled for. And, um, so if ever you need any information, I'm happy to clarify.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments this evening? We have Mr. John Moore.
Thank you. Uh, just wanted to let you know that I am on the Zoom call tonight. Should you get to item, uh, 17 C, I think in your agenda and have any questions for the city, uh, I hope to be there in case you need to ask them. So just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you, Ms. Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Any other?
I don't either. I just looked through all three pages. Okay.
Other public comments, we will move on. Mr. Walmsley, superintendent.
But I said Senator Hornberg. And I think when I saw Horn, um, I thought of our representative. So she is not the senator. She's a representative. So I apologize for that. As when she talked to me on the phone, or actually she called me that night. Um, I had to go back and look at it because I did not realize I said that. Um, you can look at my notes on everything as I copyright from pretty much M A S B and the Michigan Association of School Administrators, the updates. It says Senator Horn, not Senator Hornberg. She's a representative as she stated. So I apologize for any confusion or any misleading that led to anybody, um, uh, and, and the viewing audience or the board. As far as the legislative update, we've kind of talked about the budget. Um, I don't have anything new at this point to, to say. I'm hoping in the next couple of weeks, we will get some more clarification or at least some direction on where we think we're going to be at, uh, with the, the Senate and the House and the governor's office. Um, it is a process that, um, goes back and forth in negotiations. So, um, we do understand that. It just is sometimes frustrating on our end, especially from. It just is sometimes frustrating on our end, especially from when we're trying to approve a budget by June thirtieth. I just want to clarify, um, you know, prior to the the break, I had sent out a communication um, that um, I may, if I led the community to believe or I led the board to believe that it's my sole decision to move us to virtual, that is, that's not the the issue. And it's not. It is the Board of Education has to physically decide whether we're in person or virtual based on the extended learning COVID plan. My direction is more of staffing. And the reason why I made that statement was in in started preparing people was I feared uh, that we are not going to be able to staff our buildings. And it is as of Saturday, when I, or Friday night, when I think I spoke to you Friday, Ms. Michonne, um, Saturday, I sent out a letter. I had a little technical difficulties getting internet connection and so forth, but we were able to go. At that point, I had not heard of any uh, new cases of positive cases of staff members or of students, et cetera. Um, forgive me, I'm going to pull out my phone. I thought I printed it, but I didn't. So I'm going to pull. But however, I am extremely concerned that we're not going to be able to staff our buildings. Today, if you give me just a second here to pull up the number, um, I asked Mrs. Era, Eris, uh, to send me an updated number. And each building, it's in one of my piles here, so I apologize. We have a lot of staff uh, out. We have at Lee, we have four staff that are COVID related. Um, middle school, we have four staff out and three, three staff, two teachers with and one COVID aid. We have a total of eleven staff members that were out today. The number of students that we quarantined today was a lot. Um, I literally, when I got into the district today, the first person I met was Mr. Castle and Mrs. Borwick. Mrs. Borwick handed me a stack of papers that we have quarantined. I haven't even sent that letter out today because I'm still getting them. Uh, Mr. Koshin brought over a stack this afternoon. Um, so my intent in in preparing people was if I knew this past weekend that I did not have enough staff, my choices are one of two things. Uh, we run it and hope for the best, which is not good. Or I call school. And when we did this back in November, we called school on November sixteen. And in the conversation I had with the board at that time was to say, okay, I'm going to, I need to move us virtually. So we have teachers who have to be quarantined, but they can still teach. Um, if we're virtual, we don't have enough subs, as Mrs. Pacito pointed out, we don't know. We do not have enough subs to cover all these absence. So teachers are teaching on their prep or or missing preps. The intent is to move us to virtual at least one day after the the board meeting. So when we, the decision was made back in November, I said through Thanksgiving was the letter. We had a board meeting the Monday before Thanksgiving. The Tuesday after allowed me to get communication out, whatever the board decided. If I had to call it now prior to the break or then, it would have been through at least Tuesday so that we would have the conversation here. Um, if if I led anybody to believe that I have that sole authority, I that, I apologize, that is not my discretion. The legislators have given that discretion to you. I do have the ability based on board policy to close school if there's a safety or staffing issue, a snow day, an inclement weather day, which I I do notify the board when we do that as soon as I um, actually, I think you're the the first group that gets the text message and when I start the chain. So with that, um, as of today, we are in a very different spot than we were when I sent that letter out Saturday. We have staff that are quarantined. We have staff that have tested positive. We have students that have tested positive. We have students that have quarantined. And so I think that's going to be our discussion later on is do we continue in person? It is my hope and my desire to be in in person. But we can't sustain um, the number of staff that we're facing, particularly when we start getting into bus drivers, para pros, all the ancillary support staff that we still don't have subs for them. And bus drivers are a need. So if I have bus drivers quarantined, we're shutting down a run. And I'm telling parents, I don't have a way to get your child to school for the next, uh, you know, two weeks or whatever. And and the CDC and the Health Department has now moved the quarantine from ten days back up to fourteen days. So it's now a longer period that we're quarantining, 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 had a word quarantine, uh, students and staff. Um, and I know today, um, I can't say I didn't have a chance to touch base at the middle school because I stopped at the high school and then went to the elementary school. Um, but I know they have, they have a list. Um, Mr. Bartel sent me a text on Sunday, um, maybe it was Saturday, Sunday, that he had two staff members that had tested positive. So um, he was covering that within his building, working on that on on Sunday. So um, I will, as in the meeting while we're, while we're doing some of the others, I'm going to find that sheet that has the actual numbers of students that are tested positive and numbers that are quarantined as of this afternoon. So other than that, um, tomorrow is state testing begins. The SAT at the high school, um, I'm going to uh, give kudos to Mr. Castle and Mrs. Borwick and the entire high school staff. This is not an easy process. The the hoops and hurdles that they have to go through just to administer a test is not easy. Um, but they do a remarkable job and are and are committed to it. So um, I wish all the students a well-rested night tonight. So um, they can do well on the test. Um, you may have heard the 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 federal government did not approve Michigan's waiver to to waive the tests this year. Um, so we still have to administer the SAT, PSAT, and the M step for all of our grade levels. So um, all the buildings have a plan of how they're doing it. They're coordinating with virtual students. It it's a lot of work and I I give kudos to all of them for what they've done and are able to do that. So that's all I have.
So Brian, the virtual students, do they have to come in? And what about our quarantine kids? Do those kids stay quarantined? Then we got to do it on the makeup day?
They would have to be, once they're done with their quarantine, do it on the makeup, test on the makeup day. But the virtual kids who are not quarantined, we have to coordinate bringing them in.
In. Okay, thank you. Okay, um, any items of interest from the board? I'll start down at that. Ed Margaret, any items?
Sure. Um, I just want to um, acknowledge the statement that was made by Representative Hornberger. Since I'm the board member she was referring to, um, Mr. Walmsley did say that it was your bill. So um, my apologies to you that it was not your bill. It was someone else's. Um, so that person is clueless. And I think it's wonderful that you're so connected to Richmond that you were able to jump on to our board meeting and contact our superintendent. So maybe that means you can give us some help here in Richmond and work in the legislature and get us some more equitable funding so we can get some more money and be treated fairly inequitably with other school districts. And um, I don't believe that my comments were uncalled for. I I'm, I truly believe in public education and fairness and smart legislation. So um, as you made a call to Mr. Walmsley, you most certainly could call me anytime you like if I say something at the board table that is um, something you don't like.
Thank you, Margaret. Uh, Danielle, Mrs. Hutton?
Yeah, I just, I had, I guess more of a question for Brian because it's my understanding. I just want to clarify because I, for my own schools, well, that the students are to offer testing to the students, but we are not being held to the ninety-five percent accountability for funding. So we're required to offer it. They're not necessarily required to take. It's sort of like your um, statement about the virtual students having to come in. Yes, they can come in if they're comfortable coming in, but there's no penalty, at least from my understanding, there's no penalty to them. There's no penalty to the district. There's no penalty to anybody for them not coming in and taking it.
For the, for the, for the accountability?
Yeah.
You are correct. For this year, the ninety-five percent um, is waived. If we're to use any type of state assessment to drive our instruction, which is what all of our school improvement plans are, the more students you have tested and get that data, the better you have a snapshot. So
Better validity, yeah.
You know, if we only have fifty percent, you know, that's not really giving us an accurate measurement of what our kids can do. But you are right for this year for the accountability portion that, um, I don't know if it was officially waived or how they phrase it, but we aren't held to that ninety-five percent, but we still have to test. So.
Right, yeah. And I remember you saying at the last meeting about the numbers of virtual students. I feel like if there are those virtual students out there that aren't comfortable coming in, at least they know that they can say no. It's a, you know, ten percent. And if every single person came in, I don't know that that would skew our data too much, but just so they know they do have that option. Um, I know in my school, we ended up only having two people in this area that are testing. Everybody else opted out. So but our numbers are not tied to other things going on as well. So, yeah.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
No, thank you. Okay.
Um, I guess I would like to address the um, Mrs. Hornberger. She's still still on there as well. Um, on behalf of the Richmond School Board, I'm sorry, these are falling off. I would like to apologize. I think you know, things that are being said were very inappropriate. It reflects poorly on us. And I've bitten my tongue the last two board meetings. And we just, we just because we have a thought doesn't mean we need to spew it out and say it. Maybe some things are better kept to ourselves. So on behalf of Richmond School Board, I apologize.
Thank you. I'm looking on my Zoom and I see a Todd Oswald with his hand up. Is it too late? Okay, I just see it now. Okay, um, I have no comments for the board this evening. Okay, well. I'm sorry. Angela, do you have any comments for the board? I apologize.
I'm, I am good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, our next agenda item, I am looking for a motion to go into closed session pursuant to section, section eight H of the Michigan Open Meetings Act.
Pursuant to section eight H of the Michigan Open Meetings Act, I move that the Board of Education go into closed session to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by the state or federal statute.
Do I have a su- a support? Any discussion? Okay, this is a roll call vote. Angela?
Aye.
Bridgette? Margaret?
Aye.
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Sharon?
Uh, aye.
And I, I'm also. Be going into closed session at nine oh four, going back into open session at nine thirty-three. Okay, at this time, uh, we will be dealing, uh, we're going to talk and discuss the Teamsters grievance. Um, at this time, I would like to turn it over to Mr., is Mr. Lansdale going to be representing the administrators?
Yes, I will.
Okay, so at this time, Mr. Lansdale, I'd like you to present um, the administrator's side and what they would like for a disposition for the grievance.
Okay, uh, thank you for taking the time tonight to listen to our two grievances. Um, I'd like to present one at a time. And if you would have any questions at the end of each one, ask them then, or we can do it at the end of both of them, whatever your wishes are. I'd like to start with the grievance regarding the additional workdays. You should have before you timelines of events regarding the grievance on paying administrators for the days that we have worked over their their contracts. Administrators um, have contracts that have specific number of workdays. Because of the pandemic and because the group stepped up when Mr. Walmsley needed us, there was going to be extra days involved this year, um, over and above what their contract is. Um, we had a number of meetings um, on this grievance and we thought we had it resolved, um, except for one individual had a conference that was um, work-related that we couldn't agree on whether or not he'd get paid for those extra days or not. But I thought we had an agreement on everybody else's. So um, like I said, we stepped up and and um, because of the one individual, um, the proposal to settle this thing um, was hinged upon the other grievance too. So I I'd like you to consider them individually instead of hinging them or keeping one captive over the other. We go back all the way to, you know, July seventeenth, when we had a meeting with Mr. Walmsley, Mr. Huber, Mr. Bartels, Mr. Burke Meyer, and myself. And like I said, we thought we had it worked out and even your attorney thought it was a reasonable proposal. Um, and Mr. Walmsley was going to get back to us and he didn't. Um, but we did have additional meetings after that. And again, I thought we had it resolved. We know that students need staff in the building. And like I said, we we were there and we worked the extra days or we're going to work the extra days by the end of the school year. And we just want to make sure that we're going to be paid for those additional days uh, over and above what our contracts say. So we want you to consider that uh, on the first grievance. So I'm not sure if you have any questions concerning this one at this time.
Hey, does anybody from the board? I will work my way down if you have any questions. I'll start at the other end. Um, Mrs. Zubi, do you have any questions?
Not at this time.
Mr. Simmons?
I just want to say hi, Mike. Fifteen months and one week since you've been in front of the dog and pony show. Great to see you.
Thank you.
She, Mrs. Shuboy, do you have any questions for him at this time? Yeah, wait, wait. Okay, um, Mrs. Talto, any questions?
Yeah, are we talking? We're talking the grievance about the days and Mr. Lansdale, you said something that one of the members had a work-related conference?
There's going to be a conference, I believe, that it's going to be in Florida, they think, if Florida opens back up to these type of conferences. And it would be work-related and additional days.
And what is that work-related conference?
Uh, I would ask Anthony to step in on this one.
It it's the Odyssey of the Mind World Finals.
And that's a Richmond Schools work-related conference?
Yes, uh, Odyssey of the Mind had, we have Odyssey of the Mind teams at Richmond this year. They have taken a pause because of the pandemic. But uh, I go to the conference, I bring, it is the competition. We bring back ideas for our coaches that do participate. It has been, as Mr. Walmsley has allowed, uh, professional development and not counted against my time uh, since I've been in Richmond. Uh, it brings back ideas and and things that we can use in our curriculum and then how to share with teachers.
Okay, and that, Mr. Lansdale, you said that this first grievance uh, is you want to be sure you're paid for the additional days? The administrative group, that's the whole point of this grievance?
Correct. And and we hit it all, I believe, we hit it in the numbers for each one as to how many additional days each one would be getting.
Okay.
And uh, days that they have taken off versus uh, the additional workdays.
So nobody so far has been paid for their additional days of work yet?
No, and we're not asking for that right, right at this time. We're asking that when the school year is over and we've worked these additional days that we do get paid for them. We haven't got commitment that that's going to happen.
So the whole point of this is you grieved because you don't think you're going to get paid for the additional days? And that violates the contract?
And that violates the contract how?
The individual contracts have a number of days in them.
Right.
And, and they would be working over those in that number of days. So then they would be paid a daily rate for those additional days.
Yep, I understand that, but how is the contract violated to file the grievance if they haven't worked the additional days and haven't been paid for them yet? I'm not following.
I can, I can answer that, um, because when we met in July, um, we, we came up with a verbal agreement with Mister Walmsley that had, um, conditions to it, understanding that we would be comped for that time. And he's made it clear throughout that, that he would um, at, at different times, but then would also, but then would also say that he has every intent to get us down to our contractual day number, which would mean that I am not at school during student days. And I, when, when Brian first got here, I agreed with him a hundred percent. We need to be in school when students are in school. I don't disagree with that a hundred percent. That's always been my philosophy.
Right.
Now. So I'm on, I'm on a hundred percent page with Mister Walmsley on that. So now though, I'm called in in July with a week's notice. Our administrators had to cancel plans. We're told to use their personal days or sick days. So what we were asking for is to be paid for those in an understanding. So for example, I was eight days over. And the agreement that we had with Mister Walmsley in July got dragged into October. We kept asking to follow up on it and he'd say, I have every intent. In fact, in one of the meetings, he told us that he was gonna pay us with the cares money, um, which expired or had to be spent by December. So there's full intent to pay it. And but then, um, he'd send an email that would say I have, that he was gonna get us down to our number, um, which would require me to take days off just for the sake of taking days off when students are in the building. And that goes against my philosophy. Now, some.
It, it also goes.
Take advantage of that.
It also goes against.
I will.
If I could, it also goes against the agreement that we agreed on July seventeenth. When, when we met with Mister Huber, who said that sounds reasonable and Mister Walmsley will type it up. He said, we agreed that we wouldn't have calendar changes unless it was mutually agreed upon by the individual administrator and Mister Walmsley.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I, I absolutely understand all that. I'm just confused that a grievance is filed for something that hasn't even happened yet. That's, that's what I don't understand. You're, Mister Lansdale says you wanna be sure you're paid for those days. So you file a grievance for it. That just doesn't make sense to me. I don't know where the contract's violated. And then where, what's the point?
Cause Mister Huber said, Mister Huber, Mister Huber said in July that it, that needs to be in writing and you agree with that, Mister Walmsley? And he said, yes. And I'll, he says, I can't get to it over the weekend, but I'll get to it Monday. Well, that didn't happen. I sent him an email on that Thursday and I said, hey, I know you're busy. We know you're busy. But here's what we agreed to. So nothing happened from that time forward except for emails directly opposite of what we agreed to. And it stated opposite of what we agreed to. And our members were frustrated with that. And that goes back to my eight days that he said he wanted me to get down to my two oh five instead of the two thirteen. And, and he, and he says, well, I didn't really mean that in the email. Can you just get me down to five days? Can we just get down to five? I said, yeah, you know, I have different appointments I can do. I won't use sick time. I have no problem working with you. We'll get it down to five days. We didn't push having the eight days. We all kinda agreed to the five days and some people had vacations. Uh, we've had members that have taken vacations that have been allowed in the past couple of years. This year, we were gonna stop that practice when we talked to Mister Walmsley. And, um, but then when this came up, it was an opportunity for him to allow the vacations to save the district money if it worked out for that administrator. So what we did with this compensation is that some people say, hey, I don't wanna miss work. And someone might say, well, you know what? I like taking a couple of days off here or there. And if I can work that out with, with the boss, then, then I'll do that. And we said, we absolutely agree to that. So for for administrators right now and, and even before, the back for us to move up earlier in October, which Mister Walmsley has every right to schedule our two hundred and five days. We're not arguing that. We're just asking for commitment on the verbal agreement. So every, if, so in June, we usually typically work three weeks before and two weeks after with however two oh five falls. Well, the last five days typically that we work in June was put on the front in August, so we could come in earlier. Totally understood why.
Right.
I mean, bond work, pandemic, we get it. But Margaret, you being a, a former high school secretary, there's a lot of work to do.
Well, not former, I still do it.
Well, I mean, I didn't know you, that you were at a high school. I thought you were just. But anyways, there's a lot of paperwork and a lot of things that get done. So we're done seven days after the student's last day. And anybody that's worked in a high school office or administration that has to butt, you know, wrap up things and get things done at the end of the year, we are going to be working, if not at home, even after that, to make sure things are done. So we're just asking for verbal commitments to be followed through on, and we're just asking to be treated fairly.
Absolutely, but, but the contract hasn't been violated yet because you haven't worked the extra days. That's, that's just the point of what my question was.
Well, the verbal, the verbal agreement has been, has not been committed to is, is what we're, what we walked out with back in July was, was an agreement that this was gonna how it was gonna work. Each individual administrator, there was a specific number of days associated with, it's gonna be over. And this is what they were gonna be paid. And that had, that we had a problem was, was with Anthony with the commitment to go to that conference.
We, we also have a violation of the contract in that our work calendars currently have us working more days than it says that in the contract we are allowed to work.
Because of the pandemic. Um, what, what did it take? Why did it take so long to file the grievance?
We were.
We were working with Mister Walmsley.
There, there's, there's no issue with timeliness because we brought this up uh, back in July. And we were meeting constantly with Mister Walmsley and your attorney. And when it got to a point where we weren't getting any satisfaction on getting this thing in writing, then the grievance was filed.
In January?
Yes, in January, because we were meeting from July through all the way through.
Oh, it was.
Okay.
It was, it was in December. It was in December.
In December? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. That's it, Deb. Thank you. Um, Mrs. Sutton, do you have any questions?
I'm good.
Okay, I just have one question. Mister Berkmeier, do you know where and what is going on with Odyssey of the Mind? Is it happening? Is it not? Are you gonna be going or who knows?
We are waiting for a contract from Orange County Convention Center. Um, it is potentially in June. It would be mostly over a weekend now. What used to be five days because of the, the event. And, and as I shared with Mister Walmsley when he originally um, asked me what days I might be able to trade out for non-work days, I said these would need to be flexible and he agreed, but wanted them on there so Ms. Blake could build, uh, the contract. Um, but where we're at is we are currently waiting for a contract from the convention center to be able to host the event. It is potentially, um, in June.
Okay, is it, um, will it be virtual? I heard something about it might be virtual, or would you actually be physically attending?
It would be an in-person conference. I would like the opportunity to attend. I would love the opportunity to attend using professional development days as I always have. Um, but if we're going to be forced to take personal or non-work days, then that is something that I would be willing to trade some of these days for.
Does this fall that last week of our school?
It is the la, it would, the opening ceremony, if it were to happen, would be the Friday, um, which is right now scheduled. Um, so potentially that Thursday, um, I would be out to set up.
Is Friday our last day? And is that, anybody know? Is.
Friday.
Friday, June eleventh is our last day of school.
Is our last day right now.
And so you would be leaving when? On what date, Anthony?
I would leave after school on Wednesday.
Which is on Wednesday. So you would be missing the tenth and the eleventh of when the kids are in.
That's correct.
Okay.
These are all half-days, correct?
Correct.
So it is happening?
Well, or still.
We're, 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 we're waiting for a contract with, uh, Convention Center. The mayor of Orange County is willing to give us a break in pricing, but it has not been worked out yet to a point where we can say, yes, it is. We have a signed contract.
Anthony, have they have a timeline at all when this decision needs to be made? For the Odyssey of the Mind?
The event planners are working on it. I, I don't have that information.
Okay. Okay. That's all that I have for questions.
Um, Deb?
Yes.
Oh, did everybody get a turn? I just, now that there's been more conversation, I do have some questions.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. One moment. Angela.
That's good. Go ahead, go ahead.
Well, Angela, do you have any questions first?
I guess I just wanted more clarification on, uh, this Odyssey of the Mind as a professional development. You have done this in previous years and it's been considered as professional development based by the district. Is that correct?
Yeah, I've done it since I've come in twenty thirteen to Richmond. I've been attending, uh, the world finals. I've represented, uh, Richmond as an official, um, at our regional finals as we've had teams that have gone to regional, um, we had teams that have qualified for state. I've worked with the coaches. Um, yes, I, I have attended Odyssey of the Mind World Finals since twenty thirteen.
And with agreement with, uh, Superintendent Walmsley was in agreement with this.
That is correct. He ended the agreement last year after we, um, submitted paperwork to the board.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry. Sherry, um, I'll go back to you now.
Okay, so that was one of the questions I was gonna ask also, Angela. Um, and so even though I know, Margaret, you were trying to stress that the contract has not been violated yet, but with, um, Brian asking for them to take the days that they're not over. I guess that's what you're stating. Um, and I feel, and I, uh, I admire your integrity that you wanna be there when the students are there because I think that is ideal also. And especially during this time during a pandemic when staff is short. Um, so I appreciate that you guys want to be there and it's, I don't think it's just because you wanna get paid for extra days. That's just who you are. So.
Okay. Um, are there any other questions from the board on this grievance? Yep. Okay, Margaret. So do we currently have an Odyssey of the Mind or Science Olympia team?
Uh, this year we were unable to find a coach. Um, so I'm working with, uh, Ms. Era actually wants to be the coach for next year, so I'm working with her and we are also are talking about, um, potentially offering it as a summer school offering in the future. Um, uh, and how we could work it into our STEAM classes.
Okay.
Yeah, we had, we had, um, a lot of interest last year. We were hoping to expand the program this year. Um, um, to, to off, you know, obviously the more kids we get involved in their passion and their love, you know, the, the more successful we are as a school. And, and the more they have a sense of belonging and, and educating the whole child. That's what we're all about. And, um, we were disappointed that we couldn't find a coach this year, but I know, um, Mister Berkmeier shared with me what he just shared with you a while back and, uh, we were excited about that.
Who previously coached, can I ask?
Uh, Mrs. Crampton, Mrs. Walla and, uh, Mrs. McLeod, our teacher of the year at the middle school.
And, you know, I, I'm not, I'm not, uh, speaking for them, but and I know you made a couple of comments there, you know, during a pandemic, Margaret, but, you know, the, the families um, and being away from their kids and putting themselves out there and being at risk. It affects everybody differently. And, uh, one of them, Ms. Walla, they're a fantastic teacher, great addition to Richmond Schools. Um, has been very innovative with getting math supplies and all that kinda stuff. She's working on her master's program and it was gonna take her away from that. Um, the other two have, you know, young families and I certainly respect that because there's been decisions I made you know, to be a father for, for my young families at the time too. So.
Absolutely.
It's something that we're passionate about. It's something we're passionate about getting going because it's not just science. It's, it's the arts and, and everything else with, with, um, science.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
I do have a question.
Okay.
This just seems like it could be so easily solved. I mean, how much money have we spent on this thus far? Seems like a waste of money.
I don't know. I, I don't, I don't have those figures. We'd have to check.
I, I don't know those figures.
Okay, that's my question.
Okay, any other from the board on this grievance? Cause now we're gonna go back to Mister Lansdale to do the second grievance. Well, should we hear, Brian, should we hear yours first then on this one? Okay, so what we're gonna do is we're now gonna hear Mister Walmsley, so that way we finish this one.
Okay. Bartels, Mister Lansdale said we did meet. Uh, as a result of the governor's announcement last June thirtieth, which I had already.
And we can't, we can't hear.
Yeah, they can't hear.
Mister Walmsley, you're breaking up.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so last June after the budget's approved, I give the administrators their calendar, which I did. As Mister Bartels, three weeks before, two weeks after is the general calendar. June thirtieth, the governor announces that we have to develop a return to learning plan. I think that following Monday, July fifth, sixth, whenever that was, um, was when I basically that I, I need them to come in to help with this plan because I could not, I could not do this by myself. And so um, I had revised their calendars at the time to include those days, the days that were with students, which caused every administrator at the time to be over. The only anomaly is Mrs. Manguni because at that time she was scheduled to be laid off uh, at the end of, at the end of September or October, I don't remember the exact date. And, um, so she's kind of an anomaly in the situation. Um, they did come in, uh, Mister Berkmeier, I believe was on vacation when the administrators came in, um, but he did call in. Um, I remember sitting at the center table, working with, uh, him and the technology people talk about the technology that we would need to do virtual learning. Um, I have said all along, I will pay the administrators any days that they work over. Um, Mister Bartels is right. I did say that I've tried to get them closer to their days. And so I have worked with every administrator and we've amended contracts, uh, work calendar. Uh, Mister Bartels agreed that, you know, he would, I think there's three to five days. He had appointments that he had with his family that he would take those. Uh, Mister Kochen took off two days before spring break and got them closer to their contractual days. Um, Mister Reinhardt, uh, is, I believe they're all still over except for, uh, Mrs. Lashbrook and Mrs. Manguni because of her unique situation.
Um, I think, and I think Castle.
Thank you. Yes, you're right. Mister Castle is at his two ten, because he has two hundred and ten days. Every time we revise the calendar or we've had an email exchange between administrators, okay, I'll, I'll swap this date or reduce it, get it close to, um, a revised calendar came out. The last one that I sent, um, in this case, Mister Berkmeier, and I, I don't remember the exact date off the top of my head, it might have been in sometime in October, had five day, five non-working days. It might've been, uh, in sometime in October, had five day, five non-working days in May for Odyssey of the Mind. Um, and so that's where I think he's, he was scheduled to be over two or three, maybe four days. So at the end of the year, on the June 25th pay or the July 10th, wherever it falls in the pay period, whoever is over would get paid those additional days. So if nothing changes between now and the end of the year and, uh, Mr. Burkmaier's still over three, he gets three additional days paid. If Mr. Bartels gets whatever his is, I don't know, I'm going to bring it off the top of my head, he would get his paid. I have said that from day one, that they will get paid for the additional date. Uh, Mr. Burkmaier is correct that, um, when he was the curriculum director, because I had a little more flexibility, he was, um, he did go to the Odyssey of Mine, but I didn't need him necessarily as a building. When he became an assistant principal, uh, I believe there was a conversation that we had that Keith, that you would, you could manage the building if he was gone to that. So we agreed that yes, he could be gone those five days. Or something along that. I'm not quoting you.
Yeah, yeah, we, yeah, we had.
Something along that line.
Yeah, we had the conversation that if, if he was going to Hawaii with his family every first week, first weekend in May, that wouldn't sit well with me. But since he's going to Odyssey of Mine and has, we have a program and he can bring things back. It was educational. I can live with that.
Right. And so we did. He did go his first year. Um, I thought you, I thought, I probably am wrong, but I thought last year, Anthony, you adjusted your calendar so you could be gone and then it was added days at some other point. So you still had 205 days last school year. So in the October, uh, work calendar, he says the days off in May to attend Odyssey of the Mine. And still, he's still over 205, even with those five days not working. Um, I would, I don't know if you guys mentioned it. I did initially say that I would do a separate check to them and then realizing I can't because you can't pay someone for time they hadn't worked. And that's where the conversation was, it would appear on the June 25th. I was planning on using the CARES money for the, the, that, those additional days. Just as we did with teachers when they brought them in, in July. Uh, actually no, the August training before their contractual work. The difference is their year is different than the administrator's year. So. So all of them will still, other than Mr. Castle and Mrs., um, Lashbrook. Uh, unless something changes from now till the end of the year, will get paid additional days. And I will be, I will agree with you, Keith, on the perspective of it's going to be very challenging for Mr. Lash, or excuse me, for Mr. Castle to do that because not only does he close a building, he also has the CT. So I could envision that we're going to have a conversation that he's going to need additional days to finish those reports or, or whatever needs to be done at the end. Cause I, I will need him to, to close up if, um, the book's on the CT. I don't know, um, what Mr. Burkmaier was insinuating that this was decided because a letter was sent to the board. That is not true. In his statement.
But, Mr. Mashawn, may I say one more thing? I, I think we're missing part of, of what's happening here. Are.
Unmute, yeah.
Mr. Burkmaier, this is Mr. Walmsley's time right now. So we'll, we'll give some opportunity here when we ask questions. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Walmsley, do you have anything else you'd like to give?
No, there, there has, there has been multiple meetings that we've worked and gone through. Um, I have sent the administrators. I'm trying to.
Oh, shoot. Sorry.
Some, for some, we still have days over. So I know going as of today that there are going to be some administrators that will get paid additional days.
Board, can I just make one point here that I don't think has been made yet? I just want to make sure I'm addressing the board properly.
Yes, Katie, go on.
Okay. Um, I, I just want to point out that of the five components that the association is saying was agreed to back in July, number three is those with added workdays can request days off and must have a discussion with Mr. Walmsley regarding those days. And I think it's, it's, it's not challenged that, uh, Mr. Burkmaier requested five days off. And we have an email in the correspondence on page nine from January, um, I believe it's January of, of 2021, which says that he requested those five days as non-workdays. I'm trying to get to that page here. Um, yeah, so January 12th of 2021, hi Brian, we are currently scheduled May 24th to 28th to be non-workdays for me. We talked about those days. I asked if we, if we could be flexible. It appears Odyssey of the Mind will move to June. We are not hosting MSU this year like we have planned. I would like to move those days back to workdays with the thought that I can take them as non-workdays in June. So I think that we need to remember in the context of this conversation, those were always non-workdays. There was no allegation in these emails that those were supposed to be workdays and counted as PD days or anything like that. Um, so I think, I think we need to look at this in the context of how it was taking place and that those days were considered non-workdays and they were going to flex if, uh, it, it, with the outcome of Odyssey of the Mind. Um, and, and then it's important to look at Mr. Walmsley's response. I have no problem moving the previously scheduled non-workdays in May to other dates. However, I need you to find five other dates during the school year, maybe Mondays, Fridays or Mondays. You have a long weekend besides June 14th to 28th, and this is back in January. So I think that there's been a lot of discussion over whether or not those Odyssey of the Mind days would be considered workdays or non-workdays in the calculation of the one, of the 205. Um, so I just want to point the, the board to those emails to consider as you're looking through this. And Mr. Walmsley, if there's anything that I just said that you wanted to make comments on, I, I just wanted to allow you that opportunity.
I would just say that's similar to what I've tried to do with each of the administrators. If there's to be, adjust the days. It has been the target I said, as I said in the email to them. My goal is to get you as close to your contractual days as, as far. And as Mr. Burkmaier said at the very beginning, right now they are over their days. So if the object is I have to get them to be contractual, then I would have to schedule days off because they did come in and work in the summer. The contract, their, their contract allows me to schedule their work calendar from July 1st to June 30th. Traditionally, it's always been three, maybe four weeks before school, depending on the position, two, maybe three weeks after school, depending on the number of days. This is a very unique year. Um, and, and there's no dispute. Any days over, they will get paid. I, I've never said I would not pay them. I have said, I'm trying to get them closer to their contractual days. But at this point, majority of them are still over their contractual date. And come June, they will, they will be, we will be required to pay them over.
So. May I speak to the email that was referenced that I wrote?
Anthony, let me, Anthony, can I talk one second? I, I just want to follow with what Mr. Walmsley said right there is, is, and that's where we wanted in writing and where it would be mutually agreed upon because for me to, for me, I have six days right now. I took the two and I have the six. For me to get those six, I would have to give up the entire last week of school. Or I would be forced to take days off when students are in the building. And I, I don't want to not be there. So, and that's why we agreed and you and I met in my office. We agreed on everything and then the thing was that we, we didn't agree on, or I told you the members would have problems with. And as, as you said, as of today. I understand, I understand things come up, but when we came up with our verbal agreement in July, it was those four things. And the one was mutually agreed upon the calendar change. So that, that's what, that's what our association's having a hard time with.
In regards to the email, that email was in response to the meeting that we had in October where I sat down with Mr. Walmsley and I said, these are the potential dates. I do not know if Odyssey of the Mind will happen this year. It's a pandemic. We would like to have it. We are hopeful to have a world finals. I'm sure he can attest that those were my words. His words to me, where I would like to put them on the calendar so that they're locked in if you need to go at that time. I said, as long as we can be flexible, I am okay with that. I'm in the same boat as the rest of the administrators that I don't want to be forced to take days off away from students in a pandemic now that it's been moved and I don't need five days.
Okay. Now at this point, um, Mr. Walmsley, first off, do you have anything else you wish to add?
No.
Okay. So we're going to go through the board again. I'll start at this end or, because I think I started at that end last time. Um, if you have any questions for Mr. Walmsley, so Margaret, uh, we will start with you.
Um, okay. I, I don't necessarily have any questions, Mrs. Mashawn. I just, um, I, I think it's interesting to make a, a statement that you don't want to be away from the building, but yet at the end of the school year, when it's wrapping up, you're heading to Odyssey of the Mind. But I think I agree with Bridgette that this is, uh, this, I don't want to say this is a waste of time, but the reality is, in my viewpoint, this contract has not been violated by part of this grievance. They, he's saying that they're going to be paid those, those days if they work over. That's the bottom line. If it doesn't happen, then they file a grievance on it. He's never made a statement that he's not going to. He's saying here tonight, he's going to. This, this grievance is moot there. And I would want my superintendent to try to get them to be as close to their days so the district doesn't have to pay that extra money. But if you have to, you have to. That was the agreement that was done. It's going to happen. I don't know why I'm sitting here having to listen to this when nothing has not happened to the administrators yet. And yet we're sitting here at 10 o'clock at night, listening to this. That's it.
I just shouted down a couple of, can you guys hear me? I can't hear myself. So, okay. Um, a couple of questions that I had. One, one was is a professional development day can, for an administrator considered a workday or a non-workday?
We didn't, we didn't hear the beginning of that.
Here, I'll mute again.
Okay. All right. So my question was, as an administrator, is a professional development day considered a, a workday on the calendar? Or is it considered a non-workday on the calendar?
The professional development, when they've gone to like the ISD or, um, our administrators typically don't go to conferences. I'm just trying to think back if anybody has gone to any. It's mostly been through the ISD. Um, it, it has been a workday for them.
Okay. So then my second question is, in the past, Anthony's Odyssey of the Mind, it takes a lot, um, has it been considered PD or has it been considered, has he had to take his personal time from his, like, personal yearly bank to take that?
I don't think he's ever taken his personal time to attend. We might've adjusted calendars. I, 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 I can't think, I, I, have you, I don't believe you've ever had to take personal time.
You've always.
Calendar.
You, you've always considered PD. The only time that I've had to adjust my calendar is when I traveled to China and Qatar. Well, sorry.
That's right.
Just to Qatar to, to speak about Odyssey of the Mind and creativity. And I came back and, and shared with the administrators about that. Um, we have never adjusted the calendar. It's been part of my workdays for the world finals.
So I guess my thoughts to that then is it's always been part of his workdays. So if he's not going to Odyssey of the Mind for five days and he's going for two, possibly two, then those should, those three should be given back to him as workdays, not as, oh, well, he used personal time because it's considered a workday or it was considered a, one of his workdays. That was my thoughts on it. Um, and then my last question was just, why hasn't anything, I mean, they just simply asked for an email or it put in writing to be signed off on. Why hasn't it been? Why had, why didn't that get put in writing in July? And it's still not, I mean, verbally, I can say it to you all day, but it doesn't hold any water anywhere until it's in, especially, you know, when you're dealing with the unions, it doesn't hold any water anywhere. It's hearsay until it's put in writing and signed off on. Why hasn't it been put in writing? I mean, you're saying it and you said it tonight and everything else and you've agreed, but why isn't it in writing?
I think the one thing that we're disagreeing on is the, the no change in the calendar unless it's mutually agreed upon. Throughout, we've agreed on everything else. Now, we got to a point where once we had whatever the last calendar was, um, which I believe was October-ish, that's when the conversation was, okay, that's our, our, um, our, the calendar we're going to follow unless mutually agreed upon. And on that calendar, the five days for Mr. Burkmaier are not listed as workdays.
But in the past, you haven't considered them non-workdays. You've considered them workdays. Why did you turn them into non-workdays? It's only non-workdays for the purposes of who's going to be in each building each day. But it wasn't being counted against him, against the sick time. So now you're at, or personal time. Now you're asking him to take personal time when before it was always just part of his workdays. I feel like you're asking him now to take that as personal time as opposed to previous years when it's been.
I'm not asking him to take personal time.
Isn't that what a non-workday?
When I give him, when I give them their calendars, they have days shaded out that these are your workdays. These are your non-workdays and it totals to 205 in Mr. Burkmaier's case. His calendar with the five days gone now, I believe totals maybe 208 now. I don't know off the top of my, I'd have to pull up his October calendar. Um, so he's still over. I'm not asking him to take personal time or it's just, that's days that are considered non-workdays. Like Mr., um, Koshen's two non-workdays that were the two days prior to spring break. Uh, Mrs. Lashbrook's prior in January, they, she had a day off. When Mr. Burkmaier was gone in the past, I believe Mr. Reinhardt filled into the building, uh, or was it at least the backup if they needed another administrator? Oops, sorry.
No, you're good. It's just easier for me to hear you.
So they're, they're not, they're not personal days. I'm not asking them to take personal days. They're just on the calendar when you shade out the date. They're just non-workdays for him. He's still over right now. He's still over today.
Right.
If, if I understand what you're asking, Miss Sutton, in the past, I would have 205 days. Those Odyssey of the Mind days would still be considered a workday. They'd be shaded or not. Whatever color you want to say, saying that's a workday. And I would tell Mr. Walmsley, and in our absent management system, I would put professional development conference. And I would get to go to Odyssey of the Mind. This year he's saying simply, I'm not working that day. So it's a day he's not paying me. I'm not going to work and that, that's what he's asking us to do at this point.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay, uh, Mrs. Zubey, do you have any questions for Mr. Walmsley?
Just the same one. If, if you're saying that you plan to pay them at the end of the year, why not? Why haven't you just give it in writing? And, and, and getting, and getting them down to five days sounds reasonable, you know, anything excess is, you know, so that makes sense. Um, but, I mean, just having them in the building, I think is important and not wanting them to take the days just to get them to zero. Um, I feel so, I mean, just.
Well, I, I, I can't disagree with you. Having them in the building is important. Um, you know, we, we, through this whole process, we just haven't finalized what we're all going to agree on. That's, I think, the issue here. Is when we went, met with Mr. Hubert and we got to the last which was, I believe in October. Um, that's where I'm working right now with Mr. Mr. Burkmaier's or any administrator. That's what. That's what I'm working right now with Mr. Mr. Burkmire's or any administrator, that's what they have left and what I'm going to have to. Them over. Because we have mutually agreed on those days up to this point. Now, we haven't had a whole lot of coverage, though Mr. Burkmire did mention that it may change and move. Um, that nothing was finalized and so forth. More cautious. About having him out the last week of school, especially with the bond. And closing out schools and having to get everything moved out of the building that last Friday. Um, and I think that's what I did reference is, let's find him. Rather than the last week of school.
But if that, well, if the conference is on though. He'd be going, so.
Not necessarily, because I would be looking at it with any conference with administrator, what else is going on? If I need an administrator onsite, I wouldn't be sending them to a conference. If, if I need them or we're short-staffed or whatever the case may be. They may not go.
Okay. Okay. That was all, thank you.
Board members, I'd also like to point you, um, just briefly, the grievance response does say. As I have previous, it's in writing in an email, as I previously indicated, is my intent to revise work calendars. Um, and, and it does talk about the intent to over, to pay anyone that's worked more than their contractual workday. So that, that was addressed in the grievance response. Um, it's in an email in the packet that you have.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Simmons, any comments or questions for Mr. Walmsley?
I'm just trying to figure out why we're doing this, to be honest with you. It doesn't seem like it should be here right now. And I mean, the only thing I'm taking away from it is that every administrator's tried to work on their days except Anthony. And getting them down. That's where I'm at.
Okay, uh, Mrs. Shuboy, any questions for Mr. Walmsley?
I think, um. Had you just taken care of this in the beginning, we wouldn't be dealing with this, it should have been right the first time, like it was discussed and we wouldn't even be here discussing it.
I think that's my, my main concern. Is that, I mean, you and I have talked, you know, at that time, they asked to put it in writing and that didn't happen. And I, I'm just concerned that, why didn't it, and I know where, I think you're all trying to work on your days, but bottom line for me. Did he physically work the days, yes or no? If the answer is yes. Then how can we not pay? And that's just, did the days, did he put that time in?
He hasn't.
He hasn't yet. But he, but he will. So, so the question is, are we going to force him to be out the week in May? When he originally on his calendar said he was going to be at Odyssey of the Mind? Is that?
I think, I think that that's part of, but there's a follow-up then. Is, is he going to be out if Odyssey of the Mind does happen on the Thursday and Friday? When we're packing up buildings and shutting down the.
Well, exactly, that is another question, because if he is going to be out, like, okay, so if it doesn't happen now. Because we know it's not happening now in May. If it does happen in June, those last two days. Are you going to allow him to go? Are we going to give him those days or, or are we going to not?
Would the, is, I guess that would be a question for Mr. Bartels, would he be able? You know, is. Between the two of them, who's going to be there, who would have to cover for him if he was gone those days, I guess?
Angela, did I miss you again? And I apologize. I'm physically looking at the table.
I'm just kind of taking it all in.
Okay, so nothing right now for Mr. Walmsley?
No.
Okay. Okay, so we've heard. Both sides of this. Of this grievance. I'm assuming we should just finish this one and make a decision. Or no, go listen to the other grievance. And then we'll do them both at the end. Oh, that's right, because the resolution has both of them in it. Okay, so we're going to go back to Mr. Lansdale at this time to give us the second grievance. Of the administrators.
Okay, um, Anthony seems to be the topic of discussion tonight. Uh, what we have is. Technology Director, um, duties and responsibilities were put onto Anthony's. Responsibilities, uh, along with. The. Present duties that he already has. And we were looking for a stipend for the additional duties and responsibilities that he had, taking on the technology. We were working on, uh, what that stipend would look like. And we, um. He's been given a stipend before for other. Additional duties and responsibilities. Back, I'm not sure when that was, but, uh. Uh, under the state and federal grants, uh, that the district got, that he had to fulfill in, in his role. Mr. Walmsley originally indicated that the position should maybe halftime position for an individual. It was assigned to, previously was a halftime position. Because Mr. Burkmire held it. It seems almost unfair to assign just one administrator such. Excessive duties compared to the rest without compensation. Um, we had asked for a stipend of $7,000. Um, and I think when we left our last meeting. We had gotten it down to 2,500 and I think that was the, what we had agreed to. Um, and again. Um, he took on those duties and responsibilities without hesitation. And he's been performing both positions. And, uh, like I said, I thought we had an agreement of $2,500 stipend, uh, way back when. And again, uh, we never got it in writing and I thought we had an agreement.
Okay, we, at this time, I will go and I will ask each board member again if they have any questions, I'll start with Ms. Zubey, do you have any questions for the administration?
Not right this minute.
Mr. Simmons?
I'm good.
Ms. Shuboy?
Okay, so why wasn't this job given to the curriculum director that was just hired in? What exactly, this? Not this time.
You would ask that when Mr. Walmsley has his.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We can answer it then when on your turn, okay. No, is that okay? Okay, um, Ms. Talto? Any questions?
Um, just, when did you think you had a $2,500 agreement?
Um, it, it was, uh, I think in your, uh, what we sent you as far as the timelines was back. It was towards the last meeting, which would have been around. March.
Well, that, that wasn't you coming up with the $2,500 amount, correct?
No, that was, that was our, my suggestion, if you look at the timeframe in the last page of that, it was, uh, indicated that. Um, the amount would be, we could agree to 2,500.
March 18th?
Yeah, I remember, it's, it's after our meeting. Okay, so then this, these technology duties. That Mr. Burkmire is doing there. It was COVID-related? Stuff to get, get the district? In line for that?
No.
No, it was not, it was.
It was additional duties and responsibilities, we were short a position and he took on the additional duties. Because we didn't have somebody in that position.
When, when Mr. Walmsley asked me to come to his office, he said that his current structure was not working. Um, he shared with me that he was going to assign me, uh. Director of Technology Duties, he wasn't sure if it, how it would fit with the Dean Duties, it may be halftime Dean, halftime Director of Technology, he would have to work that out. He also shared with me at that time, we did not have Ms. Manguni back, so he would probably be. Assigning the early childhood duties to Ms. Borwick. So it was in assigning duties from leave, from administrators that I left.
I'm good.
Mrs. Sutton, do you have any questions?
I'm good, just don't forget about Angela.
I'm going to get her this time, Angela, do you have any questions?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, and I don't have any questions. Okay, Mr. Walmsley, if you'd like to share your.
When we knew we had to come up with a virtual option, I did meet with Anthony because out of all the administrators. Um, he, he's very technological, there's no doubt about it, he is, um, very savvy. Uh, and I did ask him, could I need, as we were moving to a virtual setting, looking at what the, would look like, training teachers. I did ask him to, to take on those roles. In the previous negotiations with the administrators, we tried to get a technology director style position. Knowing that we need a point person. That did not happen in, when we settled the last contract. Um, and so I went to Anthony and said, I, I need your help. This is not my expertise, I need someone with the bigger picture understanding. He would still go to the ITech meeting as he has been going to. Since he was a curriculum director in his first two years. I believe he's been going every year, um, to the county ITech meeting, which are the technology meetings. Referencing, I don't know, I didn't know with going to virtual what this would entail. Um, and I did reference, this could be a halftime administrator, halftime technology, depending on how we. Uh, needed to utilize it and, and implement it. Uh, this was back in. The fall, um, so kind of answer your question, it was before we hired the technology, the curriculum person, she didn't come on board till January, so this was the conversation prior to that. Aspect, so. Um, as far as the 200 or $2,500 stipend. Based on the direction I received from the board, we tried settling both grievances. Um, I threw out their $2,500 to the administrators, um, and at that point. I, referencing Mr. Lancet Dell in the timeframe, he agreed to the $2,500, but only to settle the grievance for, are the. What we approached is try to settle both grievances for the 2,500.
Anything else?
I guess I would just leave it with the idea that settling grievances for the 25, recognizing that he did do additional duties. I'm sorry, Dave.
I'm sorry, Brian, I was on, so it was blurry, could you read?
No, the. So the settlement of the $2,500 was to settle both grievances. With the idea that the one grievance, there is no violation of the contract from our perspective or my perspective in the district. They haven't worked over their days and any days they will work over, they will get paid as the contract sets. Um, and the settlement of the $2,500 was to compensate Mr. Burkmire for the, uh, technology duties that he. Assisted with in the district.
I, I'd just like to share my thoughts on the $2,500 too, is that Mr. Burkmire, um. Gave us a list of, of duties that he was responsible for doing, but there was no indication that those duties were conducted outside of his regular workday. So I, I had thought, well, if we could say that those were five days in, in total of, of additional days from what he was regularly scheduled to work. That would be approximately $2,500. So I tried to, tried to quantify his additional duties into per diem days and came to the rate of $2,500.
Well, I, I can attest for being a middle school principal for the last 13 years, that when you throw on duties. To an AP, uh, more is thrown on the principal. And when Mr. Burkmire, but, but part of this that he was doing with this too, was a lot of bond work. With making sure that we are, um, the phone system we're picking and the technology that we're using and. Our infrastructure can, um, so all of that expertise. Um, Anthony was part of those meetings and when he's part of those meetings. He's away and then I'm picking up discipline, so. I can assure you that he's, he was doing those duties and, um, at night as well, he could speak to that.
Oh, it, I was asked to compile a list of duties, not, not when. I perform those duties, those duties did happen during the day, but if, what would happen is because. I was doing those during the day, I would do the documentation from discipline at night or. The setting, sending emails to staff at night of my regular Dean duties that I, I had to put off while I was doing technology duties.
Okay, um. We now get, the board gets an opportunity to question, did we do that, Mr. Walmsley? Okay, Margaret, starting with you, do you have any questions for Mr. Walmsley? Uh, Ms. Sutton, do you have any questions for Mr. Walmsley? Mrs. Posito, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Uh, Ms. Zubey, do you have any questions?
Um, just, yeah, that I, um. There's, there, something suffered, I mean, because you gave him two job responsibilities, so one had to suffer, so I'm assuming he did work past his eight hours. And. Uh, I'm, that's all. I, I, there was something else and I'm drawing a blank now, so. Maybe come back to me if I remember.
Okay, Mr. Simmons? Ms. Shuboy? And I don't have any questions.
Mrs. Michon? I just, Sherry made me think of something. Um, I, Sherry's right, something probably did suffer, but the reality is. Um, you can say every teacher in this district have suffered for, um, what the COVID, what the virtual learning has done. And we gave them, um, in a negotiated, an extra day. Mr. Walmsley, is that correct?
That's correct, they got an extra day.
Okay, and I, I haven't, I did, I haven't heard anybody being all concerned about what our teachers have had to do all year, but. We're concerned about, um, what an administrator needs and needs. 7,000 extra dollars to do it.
Well, he would have paid somebody else to do it, correct? Who would it have fallen on if it hadn't been Anthony?
It would have been myself.
But you just said that you couldn't do it.
It would have been myself and relying on Eric and looking at the consultants that we use for DAT.
So you would have paid somebody else?
Well, we, that we use all the time, that's what, that's what they're used for as references. So, yeah, one of the, I was in the room when we did it, the position.
Deb, you got to mute.
So we looked at the bond prints and looked at where speakers were going and so forth. I was there with Anthony, we did it together, so we kind of talked through the issue. Um, he coordinated getting the bill, the plans from other buildings. Um, he said, okay, let's look at where whiteboards or smartboards are at, um. I mean, I do, I do rely, he is very knowledgeable in technology, so, um, which is why I asked him and, and kind of ran things by him and, and talked him through because. He does have that expertise.
But your expectations were that he was going to do it for free?
Well, I.
I'm asking him. I'm asking Brian though. I didn't ask you.
When I ask administrators to do work, there are some times that I've asked them to do things that are outside of their scope. In this particular one, I did have a conversation with Anthony saying, I need you to be the technology in, in your guidance. And I told him, it's probably going to be more of a halftime principle, halftime technology, because at the time. I didn't know how much this was going to entail, I could speculate, which is why I gave him that number. I don't know if it's truly a halftime now, what it evolved to. At the beginning, yes, he, he spent a lot of time, he and Mrs. Bor coordinated the training for the staff in August. He helped get, uh, Mrs. Jar and some of the other teachers who were, led the training for the other, um, the teacher training. So he took that on as, as a role, part of that was when we met as administrator, he was assigned the technology group. You know, each of the building principals had their building, what it was going to look like in their building, our COVID protocol, so they were all each. Kind of assigned a task. To do that return to learning plan. I assigned Anthony because that's his expertise to the technology.
The reality is, every day people go above and beyond in this district and aren't getting compensated. And the bottom line is a boss told an employee something to do. Period.
Okay.
Takes a half the time of a position, to me, that feels like that's, that's, that's.
I'm not arguing that, I'm just saying.
Extra little task, I mean, if we can count it as a halftime position and almost need to hire somebody for it. How could we dump on? how could we dump on that on somebody that's already expected to do a full-time job? So now they're doing one and a half jobs. So then it is, like we said, the rest of the staff within the whole building is being brought down from that extra burden.
You're entitled to that opinion.
For whatever Mr. Berkmeier was not there to do while he was working a halftime position.
And again, oops, sorry. Again, teachers, what...
But he has an expertise that nobody else could offer.
Angela, please, of teaching.
For what he gave us, according to Superintendent Walmsley.
And I don't think anybody, nobody's denying what teachers are going through this year, but we're not talking about teachers here tonight. So that's, it's not valid point.
No, I, I think it's way more than a moot point, but you, you don't agree with me, but I'm not, so I'm not gonna argue with you, but...
I don't agree with you about what, about...
That the teacher point of view is very wrong here. You're talking about money. Specific individual when you've had teachers this entire year, above and beyond what they've done, and we haven't, we don't have that conversation. That's all I'm saying.
And without Mr. Berkmeier, they would have had even more workload, because they would have had to navigate all that extra technology, which he helped do.
Yeah, and don't try to put words in my mouth that I don't think that teachers should be paid more, because that's totally wrong. And it's wrong. So don't, don't assume to apply that I think that teachers shouldn't be paid more.
I wasn't applying that, and if you thought I was, my apologies to you, but that wasn't my point.
Okay, let's get back on track. Okay, are there any other questions for either side? I see Mr. Lansdale waving his hand at me. How, yes?
Yes. This could have been avoided this whole night, had we gotten the agreement on the days in writing and paid Anthony $2,500. That was agreed to. We wouldn't have been here at all tonight, and that all happened. All we needed was the first one in writing, and we agreed to Anthony's.
Mike, we're here because you're involved, just like 15 months ago.
Well, no, no, we're not here because of 15 months ago, at all. I'm here representing my group.
You're doing a great job.
Whatever you want to say about any dog and pony show, and I take offense to that.
Guys.
Representing my people, and I represent it the way I need to.
Okay, okay, done, done. Okay, at this point, I'm going to ask each board member. We have two grievances here. We have to, we can start with the first one we talked about. You have your final say, final input. I'm gonna try to keep track here on where we're at and who, so we know what kind of motion we need. So is there anyone who would like to start?
Absolutely.
Okay, Mr. Simmons, you have the floor.
Well, number one, we shouldn't even be here for, because it hasn't been, the contract hasn't been violated yet, so that's a no for me. You got my opinion on both, or are we just going through one? I'm a no on both.
Next.
I'll go next. I'm a yes on both.
Any other input, anything else you wanna add or any?
Nope.
Okay, and next, anybody?
I'm a no on both. We didn't violate the contract.
Okay. I have Sherry or Danielle?
I'm a yes.
And Angela.
I know. I got her.
Yes.
On both?
Both, on both.
Danielle?
Can you go to Angela first?
Angela?
I'm a yes on both. I agree that we need to pay Anthony for his services. I, while I can understand that we have not technically violated a contract yet, but I do would like to see it writing stating that we will hold up to the commitment to pay them, to ensure that we don't fall into contract violations. So I'm not sure how that would be stated. Or how that, what that means. But so I guess I would be yes on both in a sense.
Okay, thank you. Danielle?
That was perfect. Angela clarified it for me. I'll do yes on both.
Okay, and my last, I, I, Angela did clarify it for me a little bit there too. I agree that this should have been all handled in writing, and we maybe wouldn't be sitting here this evening. I am gonna do a yes on both. Okay, we have a resolution. We need to complete. Everyone has a copy of it. I need someone to make a motion on the first one. If you look at where it says now therefore, it says item number one. So I just need someone to make a motion saying that it's been grievance one has been granted. If someone can please make a motion? Yes? For both of them, because we're both... Okay, so I need one motion for, that includes both of the grievances in it. If someone could please give me a motion? Just read one, just read one and two. And say motion, please, motion.
Motion?
Yeah, I make a motion.
I make a motion. Grievance one concerning adjustments to administrator's calendar is granted. Number two, grievance two concerning additional compensation for technology duties assigned to Anthony Berkmeier is granted.
Thank you. Do we have any?
Per the attached resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Oh, I have a second. Sorry, do I have a second?
Or?
Any discussion? Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Thank you all who were involved in this this evening and all of your input.
Thank you.
Okay, we will will move on. We are now gonna go back into closed session, so I'm looking for a motion to go into closed session.
I got logged out.
I know, that's what happens.
This is number 15. Yeah.
Pursuant to section 8H of the Michigan Open Meetings Act, I move that the Board of Education go into closed session to consider material except from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute.
Support.
Uh, any discussion? Okay, this is a roll call vote. Angela?
Aye.
Sherry?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Bridgette?
Aye.
Margaret?
Aye.
And I vote aye. We are going back into closed session at 10:48. At this time, we are going back into open session, and it's 12:15. Okay, our next agenda item is we're going to have a discussion on virtual versus in-person. So Brian, I'm going to...
As I mentioned earlier, the, you know, right now we are in-person, regardless of what the board had approved at the last meeting.
I can't hear you. Oops, I gotta mute.
Let's start this again. Right now, we are in-person. That's the plan that the board approved that you're gonna relook at next week. I did not move schools to imper, or virtual. Just to give you an update, I found the sheet. At 2:50 this afternoon, we had two staff members and 21 students quarantined at Lee. We had nine positive cases at the high school, 11 students exposed, and two staff members quarantined until the 22nd and 28th. At the middle school, I got seven positive cases, three staff members, and 16 students quarantined. That was today's. So the question is, do we wanna remain with these numbers and the predictin, prediction that it's gonna continue to rise? I can say at Friday's conference call with the health department, one of the things they do is they, they do wastewater treatment, and it's usually about a, a week. Whatever the results show, shows in about a week, that's what our case count will be. They anticipate in about a week, our case count is gonna continue to rise. I'm talking Macomb County. They don't have it broken down into the Richmond area and so forth like that. It's just in general. The health department, last Wednesday, last Friday, was not requesting schools close. It was, but they would support individual schools in their decision. Some schools have done it two-week. Your larger ones have done, some are, we have a conference call, I don't think it's Tuesday, I think it's Wednesday, to see how everybody did the first couple of days, what were the trends that people were seeing in other areas. Our neighboring districts were planning on being in-person and seeing how things are going. This just gives us a sample of today.
And what does the staffing prospect look like?
Well, at the, uh, middle school, we're using whatever building subs we have, and at the elementary school, you know, some of them, they can teach from home, and so, but we still gotta put someone in the room to cover the class while they teach. Some of the, had no, they weren't a result of a school. They were a result of something that happened over spring break. So, you know, the, the agreement we had with the teachers is if they can teach, then we won't charge their day because they're still teaching. But if they can't teach, then they, their days are charged. That's, I'll be honest, the least of my concern in terms of just being able to staff it. So with this number, we're, we're pretty much covered of all available bodies at this point. The next step would be pulling specials such as your elementary specials to cover classes at the secondary level. It'd be teaching on the prep. There are a couple of prep hours that there are fewer teachers available. Middle school, one of the things that we're looking at, and I think we're gonna have to do, is pull the Title I teacher to cover a class and not to provide Title I services. So we'll still have to do a, a PARs report, what it's called, and we paid out a general fund rather than title dollars. So any, any non-classroom staff would be available to pull if we need to cover classes.
Does that, so, but what you said, right now, with those, that information or those numbers with the, with the sub people we have, we're, we're covered right now, as of 12:20 AM?
We're covered, but the middle school, I believe, has to pull the Title I eight.
Okay.
Yes.
And does that also, do we also go into, and I believe this happened late, where an administrator has to go into a room too?
That would be the next, we, we pull all available teaching staff first, and when we get to a point where we don't have any, then the next step would, I'd have to, I'd have to have an administrator rotate through. As of today.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I just asked, as of right now, we're, we're okay. I, right, here's...
Maybe Becky, I see Becky on there, maybe she would know. High school's the only one I'm worried about, because they have a couple hours where they have fewer teachers, and so they maybe have to, they may be at a point where they have to go in and cover that, that hour. Becky, are you still on?
Yeah, I am.
Have you guys had to cover classes yet?
Um, we have not, but we had quite a few, obviously, before the break, and then we have testing coming up. So I know that we have two out for sure. So it'll just depend on what tomorrow morning brings.
And we'll be looking at pulling counselors, pulling, so we'll try to rotate it so you're not pulling that resource all at once. The sub pool is very thin.
Are we allowed to go in there? I mean, like, sign me up. I'm not gonna lie. Even if it's a class where the teacher's virtual and I can sit and supervise the kids, I mean, we're just the same body as a custodian or, you know, somebody else.
Because you're on the board.
Yeah, we'd had a legal opinion on that, but yeah, that's...
Brian, do we have any idea how many kids have opted to stay virtual after giving them, giving them that option? Do we, how full is our building? How full are our buildings? Do we know that? I, I know it's Monday.
I, I don't, I didn't run that number. I'm just speculating. I know we had a couple of spring sports, more spring sports. We're, we're looking to move to virtual from a sports angle. We've been averaging about 10%, 90-ish percent in-person.
We just didn't see a big uptick today of people being like, wait, we're not coming back for two weeks or whatever. I don't, yeah, I don't know.
People are looking to do it.
I can speak from the, the high school perspective. We had about 30 students who switched to virtual just today.
That's huge, out of 100 just today.
Are, are any, okay.
We, yeah.
Keith, I don't...
Yeah, at the middle school, we had several stay and not come back.
They were...
Probably, probably 30.
Oh, that's a lot of kids.
30, and then we quarantined 16, 17, and then, and then of course, the positives.
You just, you, you quarantined that number today, you're saying? Just, just, that's what happened today?
Yes.
Seven, seven positives, 16 quarantines, just today.
And the quarantine today didn't, did not involve as much contract tracing, but tomorrow that will start, we'll start wiping out classrooms, because if, if the kid was there today and test positive...
Before getting tested.
Yes.
Yeah, the contact tracing didn't come into play because this was a spring break thing, is what you're saying. Right, okay.
Tomorrow and Wednesday is gonna be our, our heavy days.
So, no, I guess I just, you know, I'm, I hate virtual. Anybody who ever listens to me go on and on about it, I do. But I just, I'm just concerned, I mean, 30 people... 30, 30 people at the high school, or 30 kids, it's just going to, as these kids come back, it's going to get more. So when, when do we, why would it be a bad thing to pause for a two-week period to get people through that spring break stuff?
Hey, Margaret, I, this is Keith. I'm a, I'm 100% with you. I am a, we need kids in front of us. We need to, you know, shape their lives.
Yep.
And you can do that better when you're in there in classroom. But I think we're more and more are going to go out. And what's tough on the teachers is, I don't have these five today. I get these two back, then I lose those eight.
Yeah.
I do, I feel horrible for them.
Yes.
And tomorrow, as of right now, Anthony or I, and we'll figure it out, but one of us has to be in a classroom. And, and while one of us is doing that, the other one, and I'm not complaining about this, but from 8 o'clock this morning until 6:20 to get home for the, for the virtual meeting, you know, Anthony was handling business, building issues, and I was doing the, uh, working with parents and calling parents and all that. From 8 o'clock to 6:30, it took all day, and I didn't leave my office.
And that's not being an administrator. It's not being an administrator. I'm sorry. It just, it just isn't.
And it seems younger and younger kids are being hospitalized.
I get, I get it.
And that's scary. Why put a child in a predicament if we don't have to? But I understand the same thing about daycare and all that, but we're, we're, we're starting to put our kids in a dangerous situation.
Well, and Bridgette, what happens, let's say we don't pause. It's just, it, as it spirals, we, it could spiral through the school, end of the school year. If, in my opinion, if we don't try to, to pause something now to hold on to...
Well, I mean, if we don't make the decision tonight, I mean, the reality is probably by the end of the week, we don't have people. I mean, we're doing it anyway. I mean, that's, that's my concern. I just think we're headed there as, this is one day, and this is what happened on a Monday.
Absolutely.
By Wednesday, we don't have, I mean, we don't, I just, I just see that, and I, you know, if you go back in all the meetings, I'm the guy, just like you, that says, kids need to be in school, but one way or another, they're not going to be, whether we say tonight or whether it's Wednesday and there's no adults to teach.
And, but I guess here, my question, I know tomorrow we have the testing. So let's say we, we pause starting Wednesday, because isn't the... So let's say we, we pause starting Wednesday because isn't the, isn't the makeup day the 27th of April?
Yeah, yeah.
It is.
It's around. Yeah, just FYI, I, I have four people right now that.
Hear him.
I have four people, kids right now that will not be able to take it tomorrow or during the 28th or 29th with the new.
Oh, with the new 14 days?
So they're going to be out 28 days.
I'm gonna be honest with you with, with, with the lack of having it count towards accountability. I don't really care if they test or not, and I said it publicly, but I just.
No, I, I wasn't, I wasn't leaning towards testing. I'm saying it doesn't, it doesn't matter.
I, I think at the point is we got to look out for not only our kids, but also our staff in terms of we're going to get to a point where we can't staff the bill, or I'm pulling every resource just to staff it, and I got nobody in the office but the secretaries and.
Well, what's?
Angela's talking.
I just, I just worry once again.
What the first Monday in May is.
You know, safety issues once we start get short-staffed as well beyond COVID. So I'm definitely worried about being short-staffed, even currently, it sounds like we are short-staffed.
I've also worried about, you got staff now that have more kids virtual, like maybe they have four kids in front of them live and 17 that are virtual. You know, what, what kind of teaching, you know, is really happening there and what's going on? You know, we'd be, it'd be better off if we were, if they were just all virtual, you know, at this point. Correct.
You're muted. Yeah.
You are. Okay, Margaret.
All right, I'm going to try it again, where Keith said it's now the 14 days. And as kids that went on spring break, all of this stuff, so if you, if we said starting Wednesday, and I just asked Danielle to look at her calendar, that, that May 31st, in actuality, that day.
Window.
I mean, you could three, then you got next week is the 28th. You know, and maybe, maybe it gets you through that, and you start third with your fingers crossed that you can.
Come back.
I don't know. I'm just, it just worries me to death.
I think the directive here, Brian, on the board is that we go virtual. Now, what day do we go virtual? Wednesday? I think we need to give people and faculty time to get things together, to families to get things together. Through Friday, the 28th. So we could really relook at it, relook where. God help us. I know. We're going to go out Wednesday.
Yes, yes.
Then we will stay out to that Friday.
Through Friday, the 28th.
Next meeting is the 26th.
Correct. Okay, everybody set? No, wait, hold on a minute. Well, here. Two weeks. What's two weeks? Would be through.
Well, two weeks from Wednesday is the 29th.
No, through Friday, the 30th, starting back up on Monday, the 3rd, right? Isn't that?
You said Monday, the 3rd. Go all the way to May. Yeah, May the 3rd.
And start back. Okay.
Okay, let's get it correct.
I can't hear, and I'm trying to make conversation. Okay.
Okay, Brian, are you set?
Okay. Are we letting kids in tomorrow just to grab supplies or are we having a full day of school? Or in tomorrow?
I was running a full day of school tomorrow.
No, we're taking. But we still are.
We would run it as a normal school day and whatever's planned for tomorrow, knowing that we may have kids not coming or not taking it or more positive or cases.
Well, and they've already prepared for it, so, you know what I mean? There's been so much work to get them there.
Yeah, those that want to let them come in and do it.
And plus it gives everyone a chance to grab their stuff.
Right.
Because they're going to have to get it anyway.
Right. That's correct, yep.
Okay, are we set on that? I'm good. Okay, we're going to move on to our action items. We have our first action item. I need a motion for the approval of a bond resolution and general obligation bonds.
Move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the attached bid resolution, general obligation bonds as presented in the attached documentation.
Do I have a support? Support? Any discussion? Brian, do you want to just give a proof or brief?
This is the question earlier, yesterday, there was a petition. This will save the. This will save several hundred thousand dollars in interest over time. I think it was about 385,000. So it's a good move for our community and for the district, and so we will save money, so.
Hey, any questions, any other discussion?
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Oppose? It'll be a roll call vote. Oh, it does?
Yes, it does. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, okay. Angela?
Nope, I made the motion.
I know, but I couldn't remember who. So Margaret?
Aye.
Who seconded it?
I did.
Barry.
Aye. Okay, Bridgette? Danielle?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Deborah, aye, motion carries. Okay, I need a motion, looking for a motion to approve the purchase of interactive classroom technology.
I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent as presented in the attached documentation and approve the purchase of interactive classroom technology from Digital Age Technologies, Inc. For an amount not to exceed $124,650, for which funding from the 2020-21 General Fund and 2020 School Building and Site Bonds Series One is authorized.
I have a support?
Support?
Any discussion?
There's 50 classes at the elementary as a smart work are failing. We've got, there's a lot of money in place.
Deb, mute yourself.
Many of them were originally put in early 2000, a long time ago. They've been there, several of them have been there for a while. That's it.
A roll call vote. Margaret?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Sherry?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Bridgette? And I vote aye, motion carries. Okay, I need a motion to table. I don't know, I just need, okay, thank you, go for it.
Mm-hmm, I make a motion to table the issue of the Roosevelt Civic Auditorium until the June 14, 2021 board meeting.
Do I have a second?
Support.
Second.
Who was it? Kyle? Okay. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? I oppose. Motion carries. There being no other business, the board will adjourn at 12:35.